Council regular meeting of September 28, 2023. Meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. Thank you very much. Next, item three, we're going to move to pledge of allegiance. And I've asked Mr. Mark Hirschman, former mayor and councilmember of the city of Millbrae and with PCE. Mark, if you could be so kind.
Please rise if you are able and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschman. Now we'll move on to item four, public comments for items not on the agenda. If we have speaker cards and then also if anybody who is on Zoom, if you wish to speak, if you could raise your virtual hand and first we'll speak. Call on our first speaker here.
There are no virtual hands raised, but we do have one speaker card for Robert Ruff, who's in the audience.
Mr. Ruff, if you want to come on up and come to the podium and we go ahead and love to hear from you. Please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, my wife and I are long-term residents of San Bruno. We moved here in 1978 and we have a lovely home up in the Pacific Heights neighborhood. And our only discomfort is the weather cycle we're in right now. But everyone's suffering through it and we're suffering through it and we just added a new roof to the house. But we do, we have a, when we moved here, we used to, we had a group of teachers. My wife and I are retired teachers from San Francisco. And we like the area and we have good neighbors and a lot of spirit in our neighborhood. And, but we need recreation badly. And while talking to your city manager, I was enlightened to a thought that I had concerning Menlo Park. Menlo Park has a key system for all people who play tennis in the city. The beautiful courts at Skyline College would be a super addition to our neighborhood. And give me the chance to avoid asking the district to spend a lot of money on our park there, which I think would be, would require maintenance and so forth. And all of us in the neighborhood voted for Skyline College. And all the improvements that it's given us, we've both taken a course in Italian there. And so I would like people to consider me a very interested person in this project. And I would be, I would be willing to be a regular teacher of tennis to the students and children in any of the areas of San Bruno. So my name is Robert Ruff and we're at 3371 Longview Drive. And any of you are, and our number is, our phone number is So we would welcome interested people and interested officials who could allow us to rediscover our lost tennis. I was formerly in the Millbrae Tennis Club and I was formerly president of the Millbrae, I was in the Millbrae Racquet Club and I was formerly the president of the Millbrae Tennis Club, which has courts controlled by Mills High School, which are locked so much that the local people don't have a chance to use them. So that's, I'm giving you my spiel and I hope that interest springs anew for tennis. And we'll have a lot of happy neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ruff, for your comments. Thank you for being here, for both you and your wife, and thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
With that, having no other speakers, we will move on to announcements. And at this time, item A, receive general update from the Peninsula Clean Energy, better known as PCE. And at this time, do we have Jan Pepper? Bring her into the room. She will be presenting virtual.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you. It's great to be here and it's great to have Mark there in person. So pleased to talk to you about what we've been doing at Peninsula Clean Energy and give you an update on what's happening. So if we can go to the second slide, thank you. So we were launched in 2016. We're a joint powers agency and we're what's called a community choice energy agency. And we're not for profit. And each city council in San Mateo County, including San Bruno, and the county board of supervisors voted unanimously in 2016 to become a part of Peninsula Clean Energy. And this is our founding board of directors in 2016. And see if you can find Marty in that picture. I think you're on the far left. Is that right, Marty? Yeah. We'll go, we'll go to the next slide. And what do we do? We provide electricity from clean energy sources at lower rates than PG&E. So we are what's called the generation provider. That means that we source the electricity. PG&E still delivers it over their poles and wires and they send out the bill. But there's a line item on your bill that says Peninsula Clean Energy Generation Services. And so you pay us for that and you no longer pay PG&E for that. And since we started, we have set our rates 5% below what PG&E would have charged you had you stayed a PG&E customer. And the way it works, everyone was automatically enrolled in Peninsula Clean Energy. And 96% of the electricity customers in San Bruno have stayed with Peninsula Clean Energy. So you have a very intelligent community choosing to receive a superior product at a lower price. And we have two products that we offer. The one that everyone was automatically enrolled in, we call Eco Plus. It's 50% renewable energy, 100% carbon-free at 5% lower than PG&E. And then we have an upgrade product called Eco 100, which is 100% renewable. And it's about $4 per month more for the average consumer. If we go to the next slide. And because our rates have been 5% below PG&E's since we started in 2016, electricity customers in San Bruno have saved $3 million since that time. So that's money that has gone into the pockets of your residents and businesses rather than into the pockets of PG&E. And that's always a good thing. Also, because our electricity is cleaner than what PG&E was offering compared to 2016, you have reduced greenhouse gas emissions from electricity by 98%. So that's fairly significant and I'm sure has been helpful for you in meeting your climate action plan goals. So what does it mean to be renewable and clean? So renewable energy is energy from sources like solar and wind, geothermal and small hydropower. And clean is large hydropower. So these photos here on the left is the Wright Solar Project. It's a 200-megawatt solar project that we caused to be built. And all of the electricity from this project serves Peninsula Clean Energy customers. It's just outside of Los Manos. And the photo on the right is the Shiloh Wind Farm up in Solano County. And then the way California defines renewable energy, if a hydropower project is 30 megawatts or less, it's considered renewable. If it's larger than that, it's considered clean, greenhouse gas-free, but it is not considered renewable. And that's how we're sourcing our electricity right now. And if we go to the next slide, we have a goal to cost-effectively deliver 100% renewable energy every hour of every day for our 310,000 customers by 2025. So there are times of the day when electricity provided to our customers comes from sources that are just available on the grid. And there are times when we're producing more electricity than what our customers need. So you can imagine the middle of the summer, the solar projects are generating a lot of electricity and they're generating more than our customer needs, customers need in those particular hours. And so we're kind of credited for that during other hours when there may not be enough renewable energy that we're delivering during a certain hour. But we're going to change that and match the amount of renewable energy we're delivering to our customers every hour by the amount of demand every hour. And let's go to the next slide and I'll explain how we're going to do this. So this graph shows the hours of the day on the bottom, the bottom axis, the x-axis, and the number of megawatts of electricity from different sources on the y-axis. And the black line is what we call the electricity load. So this is averaged out over the course of a year. The amount of electricity our customers use during different hours of the day. So during the night, the usage of electricity is lower. In the morning, when people get up and start getting ready for work, the electricity use goes up. It's pretty constant throughout the afternoon and then it goes up in the evening when people come home to cook and take care of their evening activities. And then it reduces in the evening when people go to sleep. And then there's different sources of electricity we use to meet this load. So we want to fill up the area under the line with renewable electricity. And how we plan to do this, the red area, the red bar on the bottom is represents geothermal. So geothermal energy is produced every hour of every day. It's what we call a baseload resource. It's always generating. Small hydro is that thin light blue line. And again, the hydro is generating all the time. But then we come to our more intermittent resources such as wind. So the dark blue represents the generation that we get from wind resources. And you can see that the wind generates a lot during the middle of the night. It tends to have less during the middle of the day and then again picks up in the evening, which is pretty complimentary to the solar, which is the yellow. And the solar generates when the sun is out. And you can see that during the afternoon, there's more solar that's being produced than what we need. And so what we're showing is that when we have excess solar, the excesses is the striped lines. We are going to use that excess solar and store it in batteries or other types of energy storage resources. So those yellow lines are turned into green lines where we store the electricity from what's being produced extra. And then we discharge those energy storage resources in the evening hours and in the early morning, which is the dark green. So that's how we're planning to shift our resource use by using a lot of energy storage to store excess renewables produced during the middle of the day and use that to serve our customer load in the evening. And then we aren't relying on any gas-related or methane gas-related fossil fuel resources during the hours when we're currently short. So stay tuned. We'll continue to tell you more about this. We actually just produced a white paper in January that you can find on our website that talks about how we're going to do this. And what we found is that we are actually going to be able to do this at about the same cost that it, about the same cost as we're incurring now for matching on an annual basis. So we're very excited about that and we'll be moving towards this goal. So we'll get away from such a technical discussion and talk about how we're working with our communities. So we're creating this very clean electricity and we want to use this clean electricity for other sectors of the economy to further reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And GHG means greenhouse gas. And so we're looking at buildings and transportation and other types of distributed energy resources. So let's go to the next slide. So there was an emissions inventory done in the county that looked at where are the greenhouse gas emissions coming from? Excuse me. And we find that about half of the emissions come from transportation, basically driving our cars and other types of vehicles. And about another third comes from burning of methane gas, also known as natural gas, in buildings. So we're focusing on those two areas to move us off of fossil fuels and transportation in buildings and use that clean electricity to further reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So if we go to the next slide, one of the areas that we're working on is what we call reach codes. And these are building codes that reach beyond what the state requires jurisdictions to enforce. And 18 cities in the county, including San Bruno, have adopted reach codes. And the reach codes, the reach code that you have adopted in San Bruno is for new construction so that when someone builds a new building, they'll build that all electric, except for perhaps the commercial kitchen. And also the new buildings will have electric vehicle charging infrastructure. So as we watch the transportation sector transition from gas cars to electric cars, we want to build those new buildings and have the charging infrastructure there so that people can charge their cars at home and at work. So this is a very effective way to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in buildings and in transportation. Next slide, please. Other areas that we're working with our communities is providing incentives for electric vehicles. So we have an incentive that we provide to people who want to buy a used electric vehicle. We provide up to $6,000 for income-qualified residents to get into a used electric vehicle. And we also provide $1,000 for anyone to get a used electric vehicle. We also have a program for providing incentives for electric bikes. And actually 32 people in San Bruno have participated in our electric bike program, 21 in the used EV program. We also provide incentives for people to install heat pump water heaters and heat pump heating and ventilation systems. And 13 people in San Bruno have availed themselves of those rebates so far. And we also have a home upgrade program where we work with income-qualified homeowners to install one electrification device in their home as well as do some other minor repairs. And we've worked with eight residents in San Bruno to this, on that program so far. And you may have also noticed in this, in the last newsletter that your city manager sent out, that it did highlight some of the other programs we have at Peninsula Clean Energy. One is a 0% loan program where we were providing interest-free loans of up to $10,000 for people who install electric heat pump equipment such as electric heat pump water heaters and HVAC systems. And those, the term of those is for two to 10 years and the repayment is on the monthly electricity bill. So no interest loan, two to 10 years in term, up to $10,000. We also provide rebates for the heat pump HVAC systems. We're providing $3,500 rebate. And also if the homeowner needs to upgrade their electrical panel, they can get another $15 for that. We have another Bayren rebate of another $1,000. And then we also have rebates for heat pump water heaters, which can go up to $3,000. So we have a lot of incentives to try to reduce the cost and then to provide these 0% loans so that people can pay off these upgrades over time. And hopefully the extra efficiency that they're getting in their home actually covers the cost. We are also working with our schools because certainly students are really interested in environmental issues and making the world cleaner and greener. And so we are working with students through the teacher fellowship program. And in the last couple of years, we've reached 322 students, 270 of whom were students of teachers who participated in our teacher fellowship program to develop energy-related curriculum. And then 52 students were a part of our youth climate ambassador program where they do a capstone project related to an energy issue. Next slide, please. One of the other things that we're doing is working closely with San Bruno. Very excited to let you know that we are partnering with your city to install a 272-kilowatt solar system on the roof of your new San Bruno Aquatic Center. We worked very hard with your city manager to get to resolution on the agreement and you'll be saving even more money on your electricity bills by having this solar system for your aquatic center. And we are also providing lots of incentives for people to install electric vehicle charging stations. And 128 of these electric vehicle ports are currently in the pipeline to be installed in the city. Couple of the larger projects are at Artichoke Joe's. They're installing 42 ports. The Villa Monty's Hotel is installing 32 ports. At Skyline College, they're installing 16 ports. And there are also a number of multi-unit residential dwellings and commercial locations that are installing eight or fewer ports to get up to that count of 128 ports. So that is really awesome. Next slide, please. We also work very closely with Marty Medina. He is your representative on our board. Marty's been a super active member of our board and I certainly really appreciate Marty's involvement. He's on our executive committee. He's on our audit and finance committee. And he is always there to help and to learn and listen whenever we have anything that we need help with. So thank you so much, Marty. It's really a pleasure working with you. And Vice Mayor Tom Hamilton is our alternate board member. But Tom, Marty is so, so involved. I'm not sure how often you'll need to take his place, but you're always welcome to come to the meetings and hear what we have going on. I also wanted to note that one of our former employees, Cora Dino, who was our human resources director here at Peninsula Clean Energy, recently has joined you in San Bruno. And so congratulations to you on having Cora join your city staff. So that is really all that I have to say. I do want to thank Jovan for the work that he's done with us. It's been a great partnership. And you will definitely be missed in San Bruno. And I wish you well in your new venture at Santa Clara. I'm sure you're going to be learning a lot and having lots of challenges there. But we really appreciate the commitment and the partnership that we have with San Bruno. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for your presentation and your time here with us this evening. Are there any questions or comments from colleagues at this time? Vice Mayor?
Just a very brief comment. Thank you very much for your presentation. I think you're right. While I am a huge fan of PCE, I don't think I'll be very active, given how active Marty is. But I will try and I look forward to attending the meetings and learning more. I'm also a proud, a proud member of the Eco 100 program since its inception. So it's, I'm very happy to be able to say that, you know, that the electricity in my home is 100% renewable. So really appreciate the presentation, really appreciate everything that PCE does for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Also, it is important that we see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this.
There are no virtual hands raised, but we do have a gentleman in the audience.
Please come to the podium. You'll have a couple of minutes and any thoughts?
Hello, hello. We're the Ruff family. We're both, both of us are retired teachers and we're on fixed income. And so this is very exciting for us to hear. It's been in the back of my mind to add something to my hybrid car, which gives me 45 miles to the gallon, which I bought in 2014. I'm so happy with it. But we would really like to have, to know more about the economy programs, especially for hot water heating in the home. And any way in which we can divert the high cost of gas eating in our home. So all, everything that we heard in this presentation was very exciting to both of us. So I hope that this proliferates and I hope that the city finds a way to to provide us with the opportunities. Our neighbors have three electric cars, our Chinese neighbors. And they're very, very interested in this subject. Also, the loans for students are an exciting program for the family of immigrants from the lower part of Russia. And I'm sure that the loans that you, that would be available to them would be snapped up right away because they want their, they're both their students. They're, they have three teen students who are very academic. And any information that I can glean from you people, I will carry to them. And also I will excite some of my friends to come to these meetings so they can realize the potential that San Bruno offers. So I'm very happy that we came tonight and I hope to come to more meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ruff, for your comments. Any other comments from the public?
No, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you. With that, Mark and Jan, thank you very much for your time, your presence and your presentation. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Just so you know, Mr. Hirschman went over to Mr. Ruff, so he's talking to him now.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll move on to item six, which is consent. Are there any items to be pulled from consent that are for a separate, separate vote? Separate vote. Seeing none for a separate vote. Are there any items for folks to pull for a comment? I do have one, which is going to be item D. Are there any others? Councilmember Alvarez?
Line item A, please, Mr. Mayor.
Item A. Any others? Okay. All right. So we will begin with item A. I will take public comment prior to action. But we'll go through all the items. Item A, approve the draft meeting minutes for the special meetings of May 17th, May 9th. May nineteenth, May twenty-fourth, and May thirty-first. And the, and for the regular meeting of May twenty-fourth, all in two thousand twenty-two. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let it be noted that I am abstaining myself from voting because I did not participate in these meetings. Thank you.
So that is that the action will be to abstain from those minutes. Vice Mayor?
So I just have a quick comment. I'm not asking for any changes to those minutes, but just I, I understand that because of transition in the city clerk's office that we're kind of catching up on our minutes. I would, there's more interest from folks to be able to go back on what happened at this last meeting. So, you know, maybe if, as we're working through the backlog, we can go in the other direction. Just as a suggestion, unless there's a-
Is being taken care of, and we are good to go. And we appreciate both the city clerk and the deputy city clerk. And we know that we, everything is going fine, and we are up, almost, we are about right there. Am I not right, city manager?
Yeah, well, the most current minutes.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, anything else on item A? And this, and I've said it before, but I, city manager and I were talking about it today and wanted to just pause on this, not for March first, for all of us, electeds and other people. We know that we'll have to start traveling. Amazing to, to think about what had to transition in a moment's notice. In San Bruno, we went through something in two-ten that was a devastation that most, most communities don't see, but we do see it through other states and, and other elements of tragedy and devastation on the fly, trying to make policy and procedure up, trying to adapt and overcome, until and still ensure that we have the day-to-day operations and the public safety, and that everything was getting done. And so that's not easy when the only time this happened was a hundred years ago. There were not really good records of that to have a blueprint for, for what has transpired. So for someone who's been a former city employee, who never had to deal with anything quite like that, I want to send my appreciation as its mayor to all staff at all levels. If you think, well, I just did this, it mattered. And if you think, well, I only did that, well, it mattered. And so on, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure my colleagues in this community want to very much thank and appreciate staff. It was not easy. You came in and you made sure the city worked. And there's a lot of things that people did behind the scenes that might be on the call of duty that may not ever be known or written about. But I will tell you, it's acknowledged, understood, and appreciated by me and by the members of this council and by this community. So thank you. Anything else from colleagues? Okay, so with that, I'm going to see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on any of the items under consent.
There are no virtual hands raised.
Okay, so we have, under consent, we have items A through G with the notation from Councilmember Alvarez that she will be abstaining from A. Is there any action?
Through the mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the items on consent.
Second. Motion, Hamilton, second, Salazar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear no opposed. I hear a five-oh unanimous vote on consent. Now we'll move on to item seven, public hearings.
Item seven, A, public hearing. Introduce, read by title only and waive for the reading of an ordinance amending Title Eight, Streets, Sidewalks, and Rights of Way to Add Regulations Relating to Parklets. Also adopt a resolution adopting the San Mateo Avenue Parklet Program Regulations. And also hold a public hearing to adopt a resolution adding fees related to the parklets to the master fee schedule and find such project exempt from the California Environmental Equality, excuse me, Quality Act.
Thank you. And with that, we'll turn it over to our deputy director, Richie, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. City council members. Haywan Ritchie, City Engineer Deputy Director of Public Works. The item before you tonight is regarding the parklet program, introducing the ordinance, adopting resolution, adopting regulations, and holding a public hearing on adopting the resolution, adopting fees. So the agenda includes the objective, background, brief mention of the ordinance regulation, deeper dive of the fees, tonight's recommended action, and questions. So the objective tonight is to introduce, read by title only and waive for the reading of the ordinance amending Title Eight to add regulations relating to parklets. Recommend city council adopt a resolution adopting San Mateo Avenue Parklet Program Regulations and holding a public hearing to adopt resolution adding fees related to the parklet to the master fee schedule. Brief overview of parklets. Parklet is a temporary sidewalk extension that provides outside dining for restaurants. Parklets are typically installed within the parking lane in commercial districts. It's regulated by Public Works through ministerial permits, required both to construct and for the temporary use of the city street. And a brief overview, most cities charge an annual use of space fee similar to rent for use of the public street and to offset loss of meter revenue and for annual inspections. So potential parklet locations, as described in previous meetings and study session, would be along San Mateo Avenue in the downtown between Huntington Avenue and El Comino Real. Per previous direction would be limited to five along the downtown, one to two spaces each, and one to two max per block. So a brief recap. In the study session that was held on January twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-three, Public Works presented draft revised regulations and proposed fees for the parklet program in downtown. Council had provided directions to lower fees from around seven thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. In response to that, we have done that, and I will present that further down in the slides. Staff's next steps were to return the item for implementation. And staff did look at various ways to implement the parklet, and it was determined that an ordinance was the best way to do that. And so attached to your agenda packet, packet are the parklet ordinance as well as regulations and various resolutions. As a follow-up item, there was a discussion of the power washing and if they could participate in that. Staff did contact the power washer, and they quoted at the time that it was approximately a hundred dollars per, and this would be directly paid by the parklet owner to the parklet washer. And that's if they're already within the downtown area doing the cleaning. Brief mention of the ordinance. Again, they are attached along with the regulations to the agenda packet. The regulations were reviewed at the last study session. And so what we'd like to do is also hold a public hearing for fees, and I'd like to review the fees. Might not be able to tell on the screen right now. Oh, thank you. So these are the fees that were presented last time. So upon record, direction, we have eliminated the parklet permit fee, which is the upfront fee to establish the parklet. And the encroachment permit, revocable encroachment, are already fees that are established in the master fee schedule. And the annual use of space fee for year one and year two are presented for a total of approximately five thousand three hundred dollars for two years of the parklet. As a note, the general fund would be paying for the parklet. And what staff will do as part of the operating budget of two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, recommend that that be budgeted. And as parklet applications come in, we will draw down that account and roll over until we have reached the five parklets. So the next steps, if approved, would be, excuse me, to return the ordinance for adoption on March fourteenth to post the application materials online and send information to, send a flyer to restaurants and food drink establishments of our, the parklet program. Tonight's recommended actions are introduced, read by title only and waive for the reading of an ordinance amending Title Eight, Streets, Sidewalks, and Rights of Way to Add Regulations Relating to Parklets, adopt resolution adopting San Mateo Avenue Parklet Program Regulations, and hold public hearing to adopt resolution adding fees related to parklets to the master fee schedule. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Available, staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the information. We have, as was said, we did review this on January the twenty-fourth. Are there any questions from colleagues on the presentation? Questions on the presentation? Seeing, hearing, none. This is a public hearing. Why don't we see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this topic?
There are no virtual hands raised, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you. So again, this is a public hearing. This will be the last opportunity. Once we close the public hearing, we will not be reopening it. Still hearing and seeing none, then I'll ask for action from council to close public hearing.
So moved?
Second. A motion, Hamilton, second, and Salazar to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? I hear a five-zero unanimous vote to close public hearing. Now I'll bring it back to colleagues for any further deliberation, comments, and/or action.
Through the mayor?
Vice Mayor?
I just want to make a comment. I want to thank staff for, for working to reduce the, the overall fee for the, the business owners. I think this is a great way for, for us to encourage folks in our downtown to participate in the program and, and, and give them a bit of a break after a, a long difficult, difficult period. So I just wanted to express my appreciation for that change. Thank you.
Any other comments or interaction? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I had a resident ask me if waiving the fees might not create a precedent for other situations. And, and I'm wondering, when, do we want? Is there a different way that we could structure either a rebate or an incentive that didn't involve just flat-out waiving the fee and potentially setting a precedent that we definitely don't want to set? You know, I believe that trying to recoup as much as we can of these investments is important, important, you know, across all of our fee structure. And I do understand there is interest in trying to incentivize the, the merchants, but at the same time, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're being very above board in, in how we're doing it, why we're doing it. There was another resident that was very concerned about our fireworks fees and the, the explanation. I mean, there was an explanation for way, the way things were allocated and what was refunded, what wasn't refunded. But it was a bit convoluted. And, you know, I definitely don't want to make it not transparent, but at the same time, I'm wondering if we could do something other than just saying, there is no fee for this.
City manager?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Salazar, Jovan Grogan, city manager. Certainly, waiving fees has the potential to set a precedent. It is normal for cities, San Bruno included, to make limited, very tailored decisions to say we will subsidize or waives, waive a fee. And typically, what you want to cite is the public good. And the public good in this is having parklets downtown because of the general public benefit and atmosphere that, that that creates. And so responding to council's direction at the last meeting, we did take a look at the fee schedule, which was approximately seven thousand four hundred dollars at that time, which is within the average. The staff report notes that the typical fee for a parklet ranges from thirty-five hundred to nine thousand four hundred. So the initial recommendation at around seventy-two hundred, well within the ballpark. Suggestion from council to look at reducing that to approximately five thousand. When we looked at the various components of the fee, there's the parklet application fee that was a little bit over eighteen hundred dollars. It was eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. And then there are other fees. The encroachment permit fee of three fifty, the revocable encroachment permit fee of six fifteen, and then the annual space use fee, which is the fee that is charged for maintenance as well as to be reflective of the parking site, fee revenue that we would receive once we implement parking leaders. We didn't want to waive that, and we thought if there was a fee that was waived or reduced, it would be most appropriate to do the one-time fee. And so that's why staff is recommending that should council want to reduce the, the cost, we waive that, that one-time application fee. Now, it is true that many of our employees that review permits, they're actually budgeted based on that permit revenue. And so as discussed in the staff report, we will be recommending that the city fund that waived cost just so we can appropriately track costs. And, and we, we've done that other times. You may remember the Glen Avenue street closure. Staff won, uh, staff brought a request from a community member to waive that fee. When we waived that fee, we funded it with general fund dollars. We're proposing to do the same thing here. So for those five parklets, we mentioned in the staff report that in the upcoming budget, we will request approximately ten thousand dollars to fund those. Now, if we don't have five applications, then we, we would not utilize those funds, and they'll go back to the general fund. But we did want to fund the waiver because those fees are accounted for in our budget process.
And, and would those funds be held in reserve only for the current fiscal year? And then that's it?
They will be held for the, we're planning for the next fiscal year, so twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay.
What we would typically do is we would encumber them and roll them up over or have a reappropriation if they haven't been used. So we would not, it would essentially be the same ten thousand dollars.
Okay, all right.
Other questions or comments?
To the chairman, sir.
Councilmember Alvarez.
So I noticed on the fee structure with the itemized encroachment permit, revocable, and yearly fees, is the fee renewable every year? And if, if business owner chose to, when they apply, to take the two years, does that mean that they would have to double the, the encroachment per, I'm, I'm sorry, encroachment permit is when they do the work. Of course, they're going to do a one-time work. But for the revocable encroachment permit, do they pay that every year? Or it's a one-time?
It is also one-time. So it's a, a permit that is signed to by the owner and the city, and then that gets recorded to the property adjacent to the parklet where the parklet is located. But that is a one-time document.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by colleagues? Seeing and hearing none. We'll, we'll have that before us. And obviously, if there is nothing, because I do understand I've gotten it's like, okay, but what about somewhere else, or what about this? And that always happens, right? And, and so we know that. So that helped to answer that question. All right, with that, is there any action by council? Vice Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item seven.
Hamilton, second, Alvarez. Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Alvarez? Yes. Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Unanimous five-oh. Thank you very much. Thank you, deputy director. Now we'll move on to item eight, conduct of business.
Item eight, A, receive mid-year financial update report for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and adopt a resolution approving a second quarter budget amendment for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, operating and capital budget.
Thank you very much. And we'll turn it over to our city manager, Jovan Grogan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council, members of the public. Again, Jovan Grogan here to briefly introduce and present a few slides with regard to our mid-year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. I am joined here by our interim finance director, Bobby McGee, not to be confused by the Janis Joplin song by the same name. Our objective tonight is for the council to receive a mid-year financial update through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. There is no action that is required. We will also be discussing some things that will be coming before you at a later date. There is, however, a action item in our second objective, and that's to consider adoption of amending the operating and capital. and that's to consider adoption of amending the operating and capital budget for the current year by approving several budget amendments. And we'll, we will talk through each of those. So our agenda is we will first go through some development related payments and I will, I will take that. And then the rest of the presentation will be provided by our interim finance director. That will be to provide a overview of the general fund, take a look at some national trends, how we're doing here in the city of San Bruno, and then go through our mid-year financial projection for the general fund, revenues and expenditures, our enterprise funds, as well as our internal service funds. Those are those funds like our HR department or our fleet fund that really service the organization. And then we will discuss some other budgetary amendments that have come up and are recommended tonight. And then of course, we'll have council discussion and direction as well as standard public comment. Just before we launch, a quick overview. I know this is a repeat for the council, but we operate on a July to June fiscal year and we are here to provide what we call a mid-year update, but that is through Q1 and Q2 and so through December 31st, 2022. First note, I would like to talk about some development related payments. The most significant change since we were before you in this, in for the Q1 update is the receipt of a significant payment from the YouTube or Google campus expansion in the Bay Hill Office Park. Council will recall that in 2021, the city council approved the Bay Hill specific plan that included a development agreement with YouTube and Google Corporation that allowed for nearly 2 million square feet of expanded office space. As a part of that, there was a agreement that Google would prepay phase two when they paid phase one. And so the city did receive in October of this year, a payment from YouTube slash Google of 54.5 million dollars inclusive of affordable housing fees, development impact fees and community benefit payments. And, and the city council will remember that approximately three and a half years ago, the city adopted robust development impact fees. And so those fees are, that the city received are really due to your actions to implement those development impact fees. Also due to the city in this current fiscal year is a $10.6 million capital project and city benefit payment from the South Line Development that will be happening on our border in South San Francisco. That project is moving ahead as well as the potential sale of city property. And the city has a negotiated purchase and sell agreement with Cardinale Automotive Group for $5 million. And that is for the city-owned parcel seven and eight within the crossings development. And that project will be coming forward to you in the coming months. So that totals 70.1 million. Again, we have received the 54.5 million. Just a note on where a few of our key fund balances stand. This is in your report, but just to highlight on the general fund and capital reserve, we have a projected ending balance at the end of this fiscal year of 7.1 million, just under 7.2. Council will remember that four years ago, that projected balance was 1.5 million. So a significant improvement from where we were at that point. As well as general fund reserves, a balance as of today of 27 million dollars. That is largely due to a payment by YouTube in, in the amount of 25.4 million dollars in the community benefit payment that went directly into that account. There's also the development impact fee funds, the commu, that is broken down into five individual funds. I will not recap each of those that, that are up on the screen, but the individual payments in those accounts that we have received to date total 14.7 million. And then the city has two affordable housing fund accounts that now total 13 million dollars that will allow the city to make very needed investments in affordable housing. Council will remember that prior to the YouTube payment, our affordable housing balance was 3.2 million. And we all know that it costs roughly a million dollars to develop a unit. And so 13 million dollars will provide funds for the, the city council to subsidize affordable housing development, a very important initiative of yours. Next up, as, as discussed in the staff report on page four, there are a number of what we're calling potential allocations from these funds. The city council has authorized staff to begin a process to do a comprehensive look at the city's fiscal condition because we know that while the city's fund balances have been benefited and there is, as noted here, a total of 62.9 million, we have more than $300 million worth of infrastructure needs that we know of. And that number dates back to a study that was done in 2017. That needs to be updated, so we all know that number is significant. And while we have funds available, it is far short of what we need. And so we will continue to have to prioritize the funds that we have while also being diligent on our expenditures and seeking additional funds for our cap, for our capital infrastructure. That said, the city council has been very clear on the desire to have some initial allocation so that projects that you have discussed and you have provided prior direction on, but are on hold pending funding can begin to move forward. And so we have outlined in this mid-year report a number of in recommended initial allocations that are set to come before you in the coming months. Again, we're not asking for direction on those items tonight, but we are looking forward to discussion and, and any feedback that you may give so that we can appropriately bring to the council this fiscal year, items that you would like to see allocated. The first one that is of note is replenishment of approximately $1 million of the city's emergency reserve fund. Council will, knows very well that due to prudent financial action several years ago, the, the city has a $3 million emergency reserve. We began this year with approximately 2.8 million dollars in that reserve. Unfortunately, we had our winter storms and as we all know, our storm water fund is in the negative because of the, those fees have not been increased in over 20 years. And so during the winter storms, we had damage. We had a sinkhole at the Church of the Highlands that is currently being repaired. And total cost of these winter storms is approaching the $1 million mark. And so staff will be recommending that we replenish our emergency reserve by that $1 million so that we can maintain that $3 million in the emergency reserve. Next up slated to come from the city's general fund capital reserve fund that has a balance of 27 million is 9.2 million dollars. And that is broken down into three distinct categories. All of these have been talked about prior with the city council and are set to come before you. The first one is a 1.2 million dollar loan to the parking fund. The city council has had various presentations and discussed your desire to have increased parking enforcement as well as meters downtown. There is a cost to implementing those meters. There is also a parking fund that you have established, but we do need a little bit over a million dollars to proceed with the implementation of those parking meters as well as the additional enforcement. That is intended to be an inter fund loan because the current projections on the parking meter program is that it will make money over time. And so the, the plan is to fund that with an inter fund loan, but pay the emergency reserve or the capital reserve fund back once positive funds are in that account. Next is a $3 million allocation to begin the city net fiber project. And you had a very detailed presentation from a consultant on that. And we discussed the phased approach to invest in that infrastructure or continual investment in the community fiber project. The next item you've had a brief presentation on and staff is preparing a more elaborate detailed presentation now that we have cost estimates from the vendor Motorola and that is approximately $5 million for a police radio project, a very needed public safety upgrade to our radio system to align with both changes in law and outdated radio technology so that our officers can communicate on their radios anywhere in the city, which they are currently have some shortfalls at. The next item is in the development impact fee funds, $2 million. And that is an approximate estimate for the full funding of Florida Park. The community knows very well that that is a fully designed shovel-ready project that has been on hold pending funding. The city has applied for grants that have not been approved. We've came in very close, but council will be provided with an item to fund that project so the, so that it can move forward if so desired. The next item of $300,000 is for a, is for project management funding for the replacement of Fire Station 52, which we often refer to as our number one capital improvement project. Fire Station 52 sits very close to the San Andreas Fault. It is more than 60 years old. We, we have, as you very well know, two of the oldest non-retrofitted fire stations in the county and replacing our fire stations is a critical need. And so staff is working on that project. The estimated cost of that project is TBD, but we are both working on the site as well as various construction methods, given where it needs to be located. It is our fire station that is in the hills of San Bruno and needs to be in a certain geographic radius to maintain response times. And so staff is, staff is requesting initial seed money to continue with that project, knowing that the full cost to build that fire station is a, is a, will, will come before you at a later date. So those are the recommended allocations that will be coming before you shortly. That will take the 62.9 million, nearly 63 million to 50.5 with subsequent allocations later. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to interim finance director Bobby McGee, who will discuss some of our national economic trends as well as go into the other components of the mid-year presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Grogan, and good evening, Mayor Medina and members of the council. Just real briefly, we began to look at national economic data, state, and then some, some local issues that we think we may be facing. What we found is, is that a mild but short recession is likely to occur in spring 2023. Businesses are likely to continue to pass along inflationary price increases to consumers. And, and the fundamental question is, is how will businesses and families weather that downturn with no expected additional relief? So the outlook for the global economy has continued to be strained with the war in the Ukraine. In the United States, there are signs of a tightening job market and a slowdown in business activity. And the Institute of International Finance predicted that a global economic growth rate would be just 1.2% in 2023. And that's an unprecedented rate since 2009. And so here at the state level, we thought it was important to point out that the Legislative Analyst's Office has specifically noted that the governor has not declared a budget emergency despite the state expecting revenue shortfalls for the next several years. And you can see there's several billion dollars that the, the state is expecting to not realize in revenue. Locally, high inflation continues to put pressure on local consumer spending. Sales taxes are expected to flatten over the next several months. General fund revenues are expected to remain close to budgeted amounts when we take all of the various revenues into account. And while local consumer demand for retail is falling, we are seeing continued recovery from the pandemic in increased dining taxes and increased hotel tax activity. And so this slide is just a reminder for the council of the general fund adopted budget. Obviously, the tax portion makes up the, the largest chunk of the revenues. And the expenditures, public safety, public works, general administration and community services takes up the majority of the general fund budget. General fund recap, so as I'm sure the council will recall, when the budget was initially approved, the use of fund balance for this year was intended to be about 630,000. And so with our mid-year estimates, the council has approved a number of, of one-time projects and some other actions that the council took during the year. And so we're currently projecting that the use of fund balance will be about 1.3 million dollars in the general fund. So there were some net positives through December 31st. Property taxes increased by about 3%. Sales taxes were increased by about 15%, 817,000 more than we were initially expecting. We are starting to see those flatten out as I had previously mentioned. The increased hotel tax, that was significantly higher than we would expect at this time of the year as compared to what was budgeted last spring. The regulatory card room tax is increased by 43%, about just under $500,000. That's per a negotiated agreement. And then there was some increased investment income of about $451,000 compared to last year. And that was due to the previous finance director increasing some of the investment activity from, from idle funds. And so fire revenues increased due to strike team reimbursements to the tune of about $145,000. We've also recognized some increased engineering plan checks, increased building revenues for permitting. And you'll see the numbers there, about, about a million dollars in increased building revenues for a, a number of different permitting activities. So that's a positive sign for sure. As the council knows, the aquatic programs were suspended for fiscal year 2023. And so recreation saw some decreased revenues due to the suspension of that program of about $125,000 and about $143,000 in related expenditures to that program. The fire department traffic preemption system, we'll talk about that a little bit further here in a few slides. There's an increase of about $50,000 to the budget on that. There is a recommendation to reappropriate a certain amount of funds to the human resources, or, or yes, the human resources department. Some of the funds were borrowed to cover existing legal bills. And so we are making a recommendation to move that money back into the human resources department to cover some of their expected expenses that were previously budgeted. And then during the, the storms, we noticed some issues with the city hall roof. And we are recommending at this time, an amount of $500,000 for the, for the roof replacement project. Significant budget impacts, the city attorney outside council cost. And so this happened for a number of different reasons. So there was a shift from an internal city attorney to contracted services. And so the initial invoices were a little bit higher than originally anticipated. And, and there was a number of reasons for that. Obviously, as there was some transition activities and the new firm being brought up to speed as well as, as transitioning out the previous city attorney, those costs remained in that budget. And so we are recognizing that overall costs are beginning to settle in at this point and, and, and we're seeing a, a more stable approach as we move forward. As the city manager mentioned, we have received some special revenue, especially due to the YouTube expansion. You can see there was a, a grand total of 56 and a half million dollars there. That's the breakdown which you, you heard a little bit about previously. And this slide compares the mid-year actuals for general fund revenues as compared to last year. And so as you can see on the right-hand columns that are highlighted there in red, we are currently at 54% of budget, which is about where we would expect to see in any given year, slightly better than where we were at, at this point last year. With respect to expenditures, we're slightly under where we were last year as a percentage of budget. We're at 51% this time last year. We had expended about 52% of the general fund budget. So all of these figures are, are very So all of these figures are very common. This is about what we would expect and hope to see at the mid-year point. Wanted to highlight a little bit about Measure G. And so the beginning fund balance as of July 1 was $1.2 million. I'm sorry, July 1, 2021. And the revenues received that year were $3.5 million. The council approved $1.8 million, just short of $1.8 million in expenditures. And so there was an ending fund balance on June 30 of just short of $3 million. And so the council, having that knowledge when it went into this year's budget cycle, approved the beginning fund balance. There was some additional interest received in accounting adjustments that brought that total to $3.2 million. And then the revenues that were expected to be received are about $3.7 million for this year, for a total of $6.1 million in approved expenditures, which draws down the previous fund balance by about $2.3 million, leaving us currently with an expected fund balance at the end of this fiscal year of just short of $900,000. And so these are the enterprise funds as compared to the previous fiscal year. As you will note, there's no significant deviations in any of the funds, water, wastewater, city net, or stormwater. Those are numbers that are very similar to what we would expect to see at this time of the year and very similar to what we saw last year. Internal services funds, again, things that we would very much expect to see at this time of the year, the central garage, building and facilities maintenance, self-insurance, and technology. And I did highlight one expenditure there on the self-insurance because that number kind of stands out. Last year, at this point, we were at 74% of that budgeted expenditures. This year, we're at 70%, and the reason that we see that is the city prepays its self-insurance policies, and so we prepaid that at the beginning of the year. So that number will always look big as we move throughout the year. Obviously, the percentage goes down, but the expenses are all prepaid. So there's a number of operating budget amendments that are being recommended tonight. And so the first one is an overall revenue decrease of $125,000 with the related expenses because of the aquatics program suspension. We are recommending an additional $644,000 to be added into the city attorney's budget for expected contracted legal fees for the remainder of the year. Human Resources Department, as I had previously mentioned, is about $91,000. And the Fire Department, about an additional $50,000 for the OptCom Traffic Preemption System. So the total general fund amendments are listed there, and as you can see, the net impact to the general fund is $783,000. There are also some recommended actions for other areas here, which is coming from equipment reserves for the Fire Department, $160,000 for mobile radios, some airbags, and some bulletproof vests, which have reached the end of their useful life and need to be replaced at this time. And then the $500,000, which would be coming from the building reserves for the roof replacement. Obviously, staff wants to get that project rolling and not wait until the next fiscal year. General plan maintenance restricted revenues. The Safety Element Consultants were recommending an increase of $60,000 for that, as well as some restricted reserves for the technology fund for some rental zoning software. So the takeaways, in the general fund, both the revenues and the expenditures have increased moderately from the adopted budget, but we don't see anything that is giving us significant cause for concern at this time. There are increases, slight deficit increases in both the operational and the capital side. The stormwater fund, as the council knows, is currently in an operational deficit. Water and wastewater funds are currently operating as expected, and the internal services funds are normal expected activity. This is what we were hoping to see at this time of the year. And so what we're asking the council to do is receive this report, which requires no action, and then adopt the resolution, which is attached to the staff report there, amending the fiscal year 2022-23 operating and capital budgets by approving the budget amendments which are listed. And so that will require action. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that the council may have.
Thank you both, the city manager and the interim finance director. Before we give it to council, I'll ask the city manager, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. I just want to add one additional point, and we provide on attachment to in your report all of the approved budget enhancements. And in part of the presentations, we talk about an operational deficit, and deficits are bad and typically bad. It's important to note that the way we track revenues over expenditures, that includes one-time investments. And part of the one-time and part of the one-time investments that the city council adopted in enhancements, it was actually $821,000 worth of one-time items, right? And that's because we had the funds and fund balance. Staff proposed and council said yes to one-time investments. So I just, we can go through the detail, but the details is in the report. I just want both the council and the public to know that there were purposeful decisions to make investments of one-time funds for programs as well as capital expenditures or to do studies and things like that, and that's shown in those numbers. And so that deficit number is inflated because of those one-time investments.
Thank you for adding that. All right, at this time, colleagues, are there any questions on the presentation, questions on the presentation at this time?
There are no virtual hands raised.
Oh, it's okay. Hey, you're ahead of me, and that's good. It's better than, yeah, we're going. Do you have, I'm sorry.
I do have one.
Then I'll go.
You go first, Mayor, you never do. Okay. All right, so I have a question about the million to replenish the emergency reserves, which obviously makes sense, given the recent storms and the damage. Is that million dollars needed in addition to what we may expect in emergency funds from the state due to disaster declarations? I know that there's some funds that will be coming from the state. Or are we planning for a million because we don't know what we would get from the state?
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. The $1 million allocation, which is not a part of the items that are before you tonight, is intended to replenish our emergency reserve.
Right.
Now, should we get reimbursement for some portion of that from the state, we can then reappropriate that portion back to the general fund. Those reimbursements can take 12 to 18, sometimes 24 months. And so we want to make sure that our emergency reserve is at its recommended policy limit while we wait on those reimbursements.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Just two things, just for when we said increase, which is a fact, increased revenue because of the strike fund from the Fire Department. And again, just for people's perspective, it's just, again, it's not that we were out seeking. That's when we're called in to go and have a team dispatched, and we're then getting reimbursed by the state for having our apparatus and having our personnel go out. I still feel then, I still feel now, and we can discuss it at a budget time, that those refunds, those reimbursements that are coming in for apparatus, I think those should be side-marked for replenishment of the apparatuses. The other thing is when we have maybe mobile radios and stuff like that, this is us allocating the 160. However, we could find ourselves getting grants or opportunities that may reduce some of those costs, and then we just have to have the rest from our equipment reserve to make up the shortfall. And I apologize for that. It says Fire Department Equipment Reserve is 160. Let's say we get a grant, or let's say it's for Police Department, and we get a grant for $90,000. So in essence, it's now not going to be 160 out of the equipment reserve. It will just be the difference between the 90 and the 160.
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor, for the clarification. I appreciate the need, and then the reimbursement goes against that. So you are correct, it is the net that ultimately that we need. But in order for the finance director to have authority to pay the bill, we do need to request the full appropriated amount.
Right.
I'm sorry, yes, please.
And also worth highlighting that, yes, we're asking for 160, but as a part of that same item, we're recognizing that we applied for a grant and are receiving $95,000 for that grant. And that's the Federal Emergency Management Assistance to Firefighter Grant. And so the firefighters, the Fire Department did absolutely apply for a grant and received $95,000.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Let's see if there's any members of the public that would wish to speak on this item.
There are no virtual hands raised, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you very much. All right, bringing it back to council for any comments, thoughts, and/or action? Councilmember Salazar.
One relatively minor point. So I was looking in the section around technology fund planning. It was $12,000 in there for software to track short-term residential rentals. And the comment that's in there says that it'll be partially offset by the permit fees and collected TOT. And I'm wondering, are we expecting that small amount of revenue from that, that it's only going to partially offset $12,000?
I apologize, what pager you want?
I guess the broader question is, you know, is, are we projecting any significant TOT from short-term rentals? And if so, is the amount we're expecting so small that is that why it says that we're only going to partially offset a $12,000 investment?
Yeah, I'm through the mayor. I'm not sure how to answer that question at this time because I think that's an unknown. That is something that the Finance Department will be monitoring, and we will be bringing forward that type of information when we collect more data on how much we're receiving. But as of right now, I don't have any insight as to what that number might look like.
I appreciate the honest answer, and just to add to that, city manager.
Sure, thank you. No, our interim finance director is correct. But when we brought forward short-term rental implementation, there was a revenue estimate that is already incorporated in the budget. I can't, I cannot recall what that is. But the reason for the $12,000 request is not that it won't be offset by the revenue, but because when we adopted the budget, we did not have that as an appropriation. And so we need the appropriation authority to pay for that software. Now, it will be offset by the revenue, and we can provide that at a later date, what the total revenue for short-term rental is and the expenditures. But when this budget was adopted, we did not have a plan for that $12,000 expenditure, and so we're asking for the appropriation in this mid-year adjustment.
And so at that time, would the plan be to, I mean, this is a, it says it's coming from restricted funds, so would that be, well, I guess the revenue is coming back into that same restricted fund when it's incurred? Just making sure that things stay in the right bucket.
No, totally good question. STR revenue is general fund, short-term rental revenue is general fund revenue. We are funding the $12,000 from the technology fund. When the budget is adopted, we do a cost allocation to allocate cost out. The general fund does receive a significant portion of the technology fund allocation, but your point is well taken. We will make sure that this $12,000 is a part of the money that is allocated to the general fund. That way, those costs will both come into and be borne by the general fund, even though the actual expense is out of the technology fund, but we'll make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, or action by council?
Through the chair?
Councilmember Salazar.
So looking through the staff report, I do believe that all of the recommended modifications are appropriate. And so I would make a motion to approve the resolution as submitted.
A second.
And seconded by Alvarez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I hear 5-0, a unanimous vote on item 8A. Thank you both, city manager and interim director. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to our next conduct of business, which is item B, please.
Item B, authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for upgrade to Enterprise Resource Planning, ERB, Munis Software, along with related business process and implementation services and support services, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with OpenGov for procurement software along with related business process and implementation services and support services for a total amount not to exceed $800,000.
Thank you very much. And then before I turn it over to the manager, just so we know that we are going to be adopting a resolution to authorize this within this action, which was in your packet, the manager.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Medina, members of the council, Javon Grogan, city manager. We are extremely, extremely excited to bring this item before you. This is a, yes, a high-dollar item, but it is critically important. This is a replacement of what we call our ERP or our Enterprise Resource Planning System. It is literally the financial heartbeat that all of our expenditures and financials run through. And council will certainly recall, and employees are very familiar with investments in technology that have some time waned because of lack of funding. And so council will remember that when our website was into life, we had to move very fast to replace our website with a modern system. We committed to not be in that position again, and our current ERP software is scheduled to be into life in 2027. There is a significant endeavor that occurs citywide when you replace your ERP system, and we're also proposing to replace our procurement system as well. And so this is a city-wide, interdepartmental effort that is being led jointly by the Finance Department and the IT Department. Council will also remember that we discussed this project, and we're able to identify $2 million worth of funding, largely using ARPA funds. And so we allocated a significant portion, approximately 1.2 in the current year budget, with the knowledge that the coming year budget will have approximately $800,000 to fully fund the balance of this project. We are here today because staff has done a lot of work and are ready to begin to enter into contracts so that we can fully have a kickoff meeting and launch this project. And so with that, I'll turn it over to our interim finance director to present the item. But we are extremely excited to get this project underway.
Thank you to the city manager. I appreciate the lead-in. So the objective with this item tonight is to authorize the city manager to negotiate final terms and conditions and enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies for a direct upgrade of the existing ERP system from Tyler Eden to Tyler Munis, and then add on a procurement, e-procurement system, which the city is not currently using with OpenGov for its procurement software, along with related business processes, implementation services, and support services for an amount not to exceed $800,000 for both programs. And so how did we get here? Well, as I mentioned, the city is currently using Tyler Technologies Eden Software Suite as its Enterprise Resource Planning tool. Tyler notified the city last year that it would be sunsetting the Eden software and that all related support for that software program would end on March 1, 2027. Conversions of this nature typically take in the neighborhood of 18 months once you can get onto Tyler's schedule. And so staff from all city departments had an opportunity to weigh in on this process and participate in the development of tonight's recommendation. We did demo a number of different softwares. We did look at it, talked to a number of different agencies to find out what types of pitfalls they were faced as they did their conversions ahead of the city of San Bruno. And jointly, we received in a consensus agreement from all of the departments. we received, in a consensus agreement from all of the departments, that this was the recommendation that would be made tonight. And so as the City Manager mentioned, in last year's budget, the council appropriated just short of one point two million dollars within the C I P fund for the upgrade and replacement of the Tyler Eden E R P software. And at that time, we indicated in the budget book that the project was estimated at two million dollars, and that staff was anticipating coming back next year, asking for the additional eight hundred thousand dollars to fully fund the two million dollars for the project, which would be fully funded by ARPA funds. And so the estimated cost of the implementation and related services for that remains at two million dollars. We've talked to Tyler, we've talked to OpenGov, and we believe that that's, remains a good number, a full year after we initially made those estimates. And so I'll just very briefly walk you through what these two programs are. So these slides are representative, they are not City of San Bruno slides. These came from the vendors themselves. And I do recognize that a couple of these slides, over the next few slides, say that they are confidential and do not share. And, and I did want to note for members of the public that we received specific permission from the companies to share these slides tonight. And so the Tyler Hub is actually very similar in structure and format to what the Eden system is. However, with Tyler Munis, the upgrade includes a much easier-to-read graphical interface, but the account structures and the way that staff will move throughout the system is essentially the same as, as what we're doing now. And so the training component of, of what will go into this, we believe, will be significantly reduced. The learning curve is somewhat flattened. And so with, with Tyler Munis, we, we get a few new features that are not included in the Eden system, such as the department head page, where department heads are able to go in, take a look at their budget at any given time, and look at a number of different metrics that they may be interested related to staffing, specific projects, overall budget. There's a lot of information that, that they could pull there. For the Finance Department, it's, there is a central budget system where departments can roll in their individual budgets up into a central budget document, which we believe will, will make the, the budget process a little more easy for everyone to maintain, to develop, and reduce some staff time as the current manual process, as compared to the current manual process. And there's also a number of high-level executive insights. So the department heads, or the City Manager, or if the council wanted to see something specific related to a project, we could certainly pull that type of information out of the system much easier than we can right now. And so with respect to the e-procurement system, this is the only module that we are not recommending the Tyler product. We are specifically recommending the OpenGov cloud-based product for a number of reasons. And the most important reason is that here in the City of San Bruno, we have a completely decentralized system of procuring goods and services. And so without a large number of professional procurement staff, solicitations can be very complex. And the, the value added to the OpenGov product is that there is some built-in logic, and, and I recognize it's, it's not possible to read that there, but, but the additional logic that the OpenGov system provides kind of guides the end user through what would be an appropriate methodology for what type of solicitation you were trying to accomplish, or, 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 or send out, what do you want to communicate to the vendor community. So this also has a number of, of tools which are very, very beneficial and upgrades to the city's current procurement system, such as supplier engagement, vendor management, and contract management services. And so what this software will allow us to do is that if members of the local community wish to receive automatic notifications, anytime the city issues a solicitation, they can sign up with, with this software. And then as soon as the, the R F P, or the bid, or an R F Q, or any other type of solicitation hits the street, they would receive automatic notifications. And ultimately, we, we believe that that would help increase local vendor participation. And so wanted to keep this presentation very high-level and, and brief, obviously. And so I'm happy to answer any questions, but the City Council discussion and direction that we are seeking tonight is to authorize the City Manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Tyler and with OpenGov for these two software programs in an amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand. And I will note specifically that, I'm sure you saw in your, in your staff report, that both of these items were competitively procured through cooperative contracts, and that is what we are proposing to use. The Tyler contract is on, I'm sorry, it escapes me, I forget. And, but they were two separate competitively bid operations that, that both of these contracts ended up on. We know that this is the lowest price that we've been able to find, and so that's why this recommendation is being made tonight. And with that, I'm happy to turn it over to the council and answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. At this time, are there questions from colleagues in regards, are there any questions on the presentation that we just received from colleagues?
Richard.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few questions. What part of the allocated one point two or two million were spent on Eden Tyler, between Eden Tyler and the OpenGov?
So through the mayor, Councilperson Alvarez, the estimated cost at this time is about seven hundred thousand for the Tyler product and one hundred thousand for the OpenGov product. And, and again, those final terms and conditions have not been negotiated yet. There's a few items to, to work out, but, but that is, those are the current estimates.
Thank you. And my second question was, what part of the eight hundred thousand will be used for OpenGov?
OpenGov will be roughly one hundred thousand, and that is for the implementation of the product, getting, essentially getting it onto the desk where staff can start using it.
And that would be the final cost of the switching to OpenGov?
That is correct. And obviously, with both programs, there is an additional maintenance cost, as with any software, that, that would be ongoing. However, as part of the project, in order to get this E R P system complete, the OpenGov costs for year one is going to be roughly a hundred thousand dollars.
So since this is a cloud-based, there would be a monthly cost to maintain it and to operate it? So it wouldn't be a staff managing it?
That is correct. It's a software-as-a-service. And so, yes, there was an ongoing maintenance cost, and then this program is updated continuously, so we receive automatic updates, as opposed to staff having to manually manage those types of things.
Thank you. So when I used to work for the department, we were in the process of upgrading with Trackett, and it was only going to cost the city approximately one hundred sixty thousand. And we don't have to have any kind of maintenance to extra fee or, or expenditures. Also, it would allow us to operate and, within two months. The reason why I ask what part of the eight hundred thousand would be, would be used for OpenGov, because it's, it's the same concept as well with, with Eden Tyler, we're, we're now currently using. So it's, it's easier to upgrade, because we already spent money on, on, on the, the software itself, and the training and everything, when it comes to using the OpenGov. So my concern is, I, I would like to support the upgrade with the Eden Tyler, although I have to apologize, I will not support the, the OpenGov, because it would create more expenditure moving forward with this, with this switch, unlike upgrading as what we're doing with, with Eden Tyler.
Are there questions or comments from colleagues on the presentation? Seeing and hearing none at this time, why don't we go ahead and see if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this item, please?
There are no virtual hands raised, and we have no speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to council for any comments, deliberation, and/or possible action. Vice Mayor.
So I just have a couple of comments. This, this item has been of particular interest to me, because this is the space that I operate in, in my, in my day job. And I, I know the importance of a, of a good E R P to an organization, and how difficult it is to, to upgrade an E R P, coming off of a massively failed project in my, in my day job. In order to do that, I mean, moving to a new E R P system is, you know, analogous to changing the tire on a car while you're on the freeway. So I, I understand the, the complexity of this project, and, and why the, the implementation time is so long. That is, that is typical for, for this type of, of implementation. I've also appreciate the, the pricing that we were able to, to achieve, having it be not to exceed contract, you know, capping the, capping the cost with Tyler at, at the, at the seven hundred thousand. And, and then, and then, of course, if we can, if we, if we are able to come in under that, we won't be billed for that. So it's, it's, that's, that's really advantageous to us. So I'm, I'm excited about this project, and we'll be supporting it tonight.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Salazar.
So, so for clarification, the, the eight hundred thousand dollars that's outlined in the, in the staff memo is specifically for consulting from the vendors to implement their solution, but it doesn't include the licensing for the product, correct?
So, it, it, well, it's a combination of, of, of items in there. And so for OpenGov, then that would be covered under the first year. For Tyler, we're not going to have the system in the first year, so obviously, we're not being billed for that until the second year, because this is expected to take eighteen months. I, I believe I have that, that correct. And so, yeah, yeah. Does that answer your question? I apologize.
It does, thank you. And the, the licensing cost then for that component, is that something that's already been encumbered in the one point whatever million?
No. So, so obviously, staff would roll this into future budgets for the ongoing cost of, of each of these products, as it does with every software product that the city employs in future budgets.
And our current solution, is there an ongoing cost for that?
There is, yes.
That would offset that? And
Yes.
Rough order of magnitude, how much more expensive is this new solution?
That is still to be determined. It's, the, the range that we have right now, we're looking at a number of different modules and specifics on how this whole software program is going to come together. That's one of the items we're working with the I T Department on the specifics. I believe, I, I, I'm not sure if I have the numbers here in front of me, but I believe the ongoing maintenance cost was under a hundred thousand dollars per year at the higher end from what we're paying currently, if we were to employ every service that Tyler has.
Okay. Thank you. And ideally, I would have liked to see what, you know, what the whole picture was for this, for this solution, and including, you know, what, what savings we would have from moving off the current system, any potential savings in staff time from a more efficient service, you know, really more of a business case. It, it seems a little, a little piecemeal. I, I, I agree that it's an important system. The, the price point here seems appropriate, but there seem to be a lot of unknowns that would give me pause, just, just because, you know, we're, we're making a commitment without really knowing the full picture. And once the contract's executed and we begin the path, then there really is no turning back. But it would be good to know where we're, where we're going to be five years from now, and, you know, what are the, what, what, what's the full commitment of, of taking this action?
Thank you. And, and, and we certainly understand the comments. The, the reason that staff has taken this approach, this particular approach, is Tyler Eden has a lot of cities who use this throughout the United States. And when Tyler made the announcement that they were going to be sunsetting the, the system, they only allow for five customers every quarter to start their transition. And so as we've been working our way through this process, we've seen a massive amount of cities trying to, to jump that gun. And, and as we are continuing to work our way through this, we, we recognize that we don't have a hundred percent of the, of the picture complete right now. However, what we do have is the competitively procured product, and we are continuing to narrow that down, narrow that focus in. What we did do is we went out and talked to a number of other cities about what their experiences were in either doing a direct upgrade, or running a full R F P process, and then, and delaying this realistically by a year to two years before we could even get this process started, at which point we would really be up against the clock. And so that's why we took this approach. And, you know, if the council likes, I would be happy to report back, write a memo, or do another presentation as to what the, the final business case looks like as we, as we enter into the contracts.
Okay. No, I understand the urgency, and that, that makes sense. So, so thank you for that explanation. And I would definitely appreciate any follow-on information as, as it becomes available.
Would be happy to do that.
And then finally, Councilmember Alvarez had concerns about the NeoGov piece. And I, I don't fully understand the concerns, but would it be possible to move forward without that, and not implement our schedule, and then have an opportunity to either discuss that separately, or, you know, approve it at a later time?
The open, OpenGov, I'm sorry. The OpenGov piece certainly could be delayed. Right now, the city does not have a, a contract management system, nor a vendor management system. And as part of the overall project, we'd like to get this moving at the same time for, for obvious reasons. But if the council wished to split that apart, we certainly could do that, and, and, and bring that forward at a later time.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor.
Can we just, if you don't mind, and I apologize to Councilmember. City Manager, if you had something to add, so if you could at this time, and then we're going to go to Councilmember Alvarez.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. We can certainly follow up with an off-agenda memo to outline the full business case. But I think as Councilmember Salazar recap, timing is of the essence, as well as one of the main reasons that staff decided to recommend Tyler Munis is that it's owned by the same company that owns Eden, our current E R P system. And so that we know that that upgrade path works, and the crosswalk between our current system and the new system Tyler has done countless times, because they're, they're migrating or upgrading us off one of their products to another of their products. And so we can put together that full business case and provide that in an off-agenda memo. With regard to OpenGov, one of the things that cities or organizations always look at when they're doing software upgrades is, one, finding a system that is best in its class, and that, where you're not creating custom integrations. You want to use the vendors' tools and migrate your business practices to match that as closely as possible, so you don't have so many customizations, and then you have problems in the future. The other analysis that you often do is say, okay, well, this system offers a number of different modules. Will all of those modules work for us, or is there another component that may be better? And we did that analysis. And for procurement, we really said, you know what? We think that there is a better procurement module system for the city, and that's OpenGov. And it's because they have the, the cloud-based system, because it will do not just the financial processing, which Eden mainly does of our contracts, but it will help us with the, the decentralized procurement process that we have citywide. Absolutely, it will be a separate. Absolutely, it will be a separate module. Absolutely, there will need to be integration with, between OpenGov and Tyler. That is a integration that has been done successfully for other clients. And staff does feel confident that just separating out this one module is a successful path and at a marginal cost of $100,000 for the first year, we felt comfortable recommending that. To really evaluate the two is almost like seeing the demo of what the Tyler purchasing product is and seeing the demo of what OpenGov is to really make a best-case scenario. And we had a cross-departmental team that sat in on all the vendor demos and, and they sort of distilled up to make the recommendation. That's before you, it is totally possible if there are concerns that we can delay one, one component. But what I've said is sort of why we've brought you this package with 90% coming from Tyler Muenis and the one purchasing module coming from OpenGov.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Attorney. I, I, I think, I'm sorry, city manager. I think our integration with Tyler Eden is, is good because I've, I've used Eden and we need the upgrade. And, and when it comes to the, the CRW, we recently, I suppose it's not just so recent, back in 2000, you know, we spent the money on that, same as we spent the money with Eden. And have we explored, explore the, the upgrade offered by, by CRW or E-Trackit against the, the, sorry, OpenGov? Because a lot of jurisdiction uses CRW and E-Trackit. They're very efficient. They're very intuitive. And I don't see the, in, in my opinion, I don't see the, the, the use of buying a new software with OpenGov. I, I apologize. But the concept of upgrading with, with Eden Tyler is great and so was the concept of upgrading with E-Trackit, which we have been utilizing. And I, as I understand, that we still use it to the state to operate the building department, right?
Partially. Thank you, Councilwoman Alvarez. Important to separate the couple of systems that we're talking about. One is our financial ERP and procurement system from a number of the software components that you're mentioning, which are E-Trackit or CRM, which is Acela. So the Community and Economic Development Department uses different software to handle a number of lines of business that they do. For example, in the entitlement and permitting processes, they use Acela products and E-Trackit, which is made by MGO. Those are distinctly different than the software components that we're talking about here today. What we're talking about here today is our financial system and our purchasing system. Now, there is a crosswalk between E-Trackit and Acela because they, everything needs to feed back home and home is your ERP system. You're absolutely right that the city has been working on a upgrade and modifications to E-Trackit, which is essentially a electronic permitting system that both customers can use and our employees can use out in the field. That software has had some challenges and had some, fits and starts with, with, with its process. And I can't provide you with an update on that today, but we can certainly provide an off-agenda memo. And I think that will be a great thing to do, to provide counsel with where we are with our E-Trackit system. And our CRM, CRM, Citizen Relation Management Tool, which actually, I think the public knows it as SB Responds, that's that tool. It is a totally separate tool that, who, that has software licensing and costs separate from what we're talking about here today with OpenGov and Tyler Muenis.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? No, please.
So this is a little bit in, in the weeds and, but I, I was just curious, did we talk to any other agencies that are using this combination of products and get a, any feedback on their experience in, in developing the integration and, and how that functions?
We, we did. As noted in the, in the staff report, we reached out to a number of different agencies. We also reached out to both OpenGov and Tyler and asked them about their success stories and will these two systems talk to each other? And the response that we got was, was yes, we've done this a number of times and we're happy to, you know, provide those resources for you if you wish to contact them. I know that one of our consultants who was working on this project did reach out to a couple of those agencies and said that he is completely confident that these two systems will work in concert together.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I've been made promises by vendors before.
Understand.
They don't always pan out, so thank you.
Fair point. For my, myself, I think, and I'm thinking back to systems that were back for Public Works long ago. And I know, and it has nothing to do with those folks that are here currently, but when it came forward, it was a great tracking system for our lines and for our this. And then again, there were those extra costs, right? There were the upgrades. Oh, there was the training. Oh, there was a, and it was like, okay, well, that wasn't really part of what, how I understood it. Granted, this is not my expertise. The approach in the sense that I'm seeing everything and what the savings are as well, that I've had to do. So I think that is something that would be helpful for me so that some of these questions I'd like to see. Any other final questions or comments from colleagues? It is an action item. As I said, it needs to have, adopt the resolution to authorize, just so that's included since the resolution is in the package, but it.
To amend the resolution to move forward only with the, I'm sorry, with the Eden portion of the contract, which is, which has an urgency to it and have an, and have that come back to us perhaps a later time with a little, with a little bit more information and, and clearly hearing all of the different components and, you know, that may, may or may not be impacted and require integration, then we could consider it at that time. So my, my resolution would be to approve only the Eden portion.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second. Is that clear to the, let's go to the city attorney and our city manager, please.
Mayor Medina and city council members, I'd just like to, I, I think the motion's clear and just kind of read back what I think that would mean for the resolution that you are adopting, just to make sure we're all perfectly clear what the proposal is. So I think that that means that you would just delete the second part of the title of the resolution. You'd remove the last recital that describes the OpenGov software. You would in the, and the resolution provides an amount not to exceed $800,000. I think that that would then be amended to $700,000.
Thank you for that clarification. That sounds right.
City, city manager, please.
And what we would do is I think we would schedule a study session with the city council so we can invite our project manager to come and provide a full presentation to the city council. We may even have additional components about OpenGov, just so you can get a full picture of what that software provides. And then we can take that action at that special meeting, study session, study session as well.
Thank you. So is that clear on how the?
Absolutely. On the question, Vice Mayor.
So I just wanted, I just want to confirm. I think, I think, I think the answer to this is, is, is no, but I just want to make sure that in splitting these and doing it this way, we're not introducing any risk to the, the tight timelines and deadlines that we need, that, that were mentioned earlier.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that question. So currently, the city does not have an e-procurement system itself, which is primarily the general ledger and a bunch of different things that feed into that. That is the key, that we need the, the timing of this completed. And so for obvious reasons, we would like to do them concurrently, but if the council wishes to do them separately, we can certainly do that. The timing is important for the Tyler product.
Okay, thank you.
And deputy clerk, city clerk, we're good on the resolution as described by the attorney? Okay. So with that, I'm going to ask for a roll call on this, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hamilton?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Item 8C, Consider Adoption of a Resolution Adopting Pay Scale for the City Manager Job Classification.
Now, we're going to have, turn it over to the HR director, please.
I'll get to the beginning, just a sec.
And Mr. and Mrs. Ruff, thank you very much for being here tonight and drive home safe.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Cora Dino here, your chief people officer. I think this is about one month since I started with the city of San Bruno. So this evening, I have an item that I'd like to present to you. It's the proposed pay scale for the city manager job classification. So the objective for tonight's item, agenda item 8C, Contact of Business, is to, for the city council to consider adoption of a resolution adopting a pay scale for the city manager job class. So a little bit of background regarding this item. So the salary for the city manager is typically dependent upon a candidate's qualifications, education, experience, as well as considerations to what is competitive in the market. Also, as you folks know, when you hire a city manager, there is a negotiation on the person's salary as well as benefits that results in an agreement, employment agreement. So today, there is no existing pay scale. As a matter of fact, I was looking at the last brochure that the city issued with a search firm and there was no figure on the salary, not even reference to a top step. So last month in January, there was this thing called the Pay Transparency Law. You probably heard about it in newspaper or announcements and various trainings, but the SB 1162 Senate Bill requires that employers that have 15 or more employees in, in the organization are required to post a pay scale, whether it's in a job posting or in recruitment. And this includes third-party posting. So if the council were to post a position via executive recruiter, they too would have to put on a pay scale. So what is a pay scale? It's defined as a salary range and essentially, a salary range consists of a minimum figure salary, whether it's monthly or annual figure, and it should also include a max. We don't need to worry about any kind of steps or figures in between, so minimum and max. So the goal of this law is essentially to reduce gender and racial pay gaps so folks that are interested in the position know what the organization is paying upfront. And there is a methodology, there is a methodology that was used in arriving at the proposed pay scale. So the city of San Bruno, for many, many years, utilizes 11 cities in the county of San Mateo. And those include the cities of Belmont, Burlingame, Daly City, Foster City, Hillsborough, Menlo Park, Milbrae Pacifica, Redwood City, San Mateo, and South San Francisco. And in terms of the range with the cities that I just mentioned, the lowest is the city of Pacifica at $254,792. And the highest of the range of the 11 cities that I just mentioned is actually $376,870. I apologize that I noticed that there's a reference to that amount, that's incorrect. So again, it's a minimum of $254,792 to $376,870. And that's with the city of Daly City, not South San Francisco. Also, what's important to note that there is one city of the 11 that I listed, the city of Menlo Park, that does have a range, existing range, and that is what you see there, which is $203,522 to a top step of $281,111. Another consideration, of course, is the current salary of our current San Bruno city manager, and that is at $284,28. So two additional cities that I decided to add for just your reference and comparison are the cities that you see here, the city of Brisbane and San Carlos. And for the city of Brisbane, the, the current salary for the city manager is at $295,651. And for the city of San Carlos, it is at $295,626. And while the city of San Bruno has not in the past included these two cities, I thought it was important for you to know what the current salaries are because there are city managers in those cities that could conceivably be interested in our, our opportunity. Brisbane is, you know, a few miles away and while San Carlos is further south, again, it's, it's considered, in my view and in my profession, a comparable city that we should consider. So in terms of the highest-paid executives for your city, the fire chief and the police chief are the top-paid executives. And the current salary for those two job classifications effective last month started $211,428 and maxes out to $259,464. There are steps in between this, by the way. Next year, based on the currently negotiated contract, that rate will increase by 5% to $272,437. And in 2025, which is the last year of the negotiated MOU, that will increase to 3%, making the top step for, again, the top, highest-paid executives at $28610. So this is the chart that was included in your staff report and also available to the public. I just put it out here so that everybody can see it or reference it. But just, I wanted to highlight a couple of things on this chart. First of all, to the right of the column is, are the figures that references the city manager compaction with the next highest-paid executive. And if you notice on the very right-hand side, there is various job positions and you'll see the city attorney job class, assistant city manager, police chief, and fire chief. These are the highest-paid executives in these various agencies. As you can tell, everybody is using different job classifications, but these are usually the ones that are referenced. And it really ranges in terms of the percentages, but what I'd like to point out for this purpose is the average difference between the highest-paid executive to that of the city manager. For the 11 cities, in the peach-colored to the right-hand side, is 17% difference if you look at the average. And for the median, it's 12%. So in terms of the proposed pay, pay scale, the common practice generally is that there should be at least 10% difference between your highest-paid executive to that of the manager of that individual, and in this case, it's the city manager. So it's at least 10%. In some organizations, it's actually 15%. So 10% is kind of on the low end. In terms of the salary survey, as noted earlier, the average city manager salary is approximately 16% above the highest-paid executive. And so the proposal that is in the staff report really used the 10% figure, which basically I took the top step of your highest-paid executive, again, that's the police chief and fire chief. And basically, that calculated 10% of that to crew, to create that first step or the minimum starting salary for a city manager position. So in terms of establishing the pay range, I, I don't think I can see that. That's here. So the proposed pay range is $285,410 to $385,000. And so let me just kind of go over in terms of things that I considered in determining this. So first of all, the city council is the higher authority. So, first of all, the city council is the higher authority for the city council, for the city manager, excuse me. This provides you ultimate latitude and flexibility to appoint a city manager anywhere within the range. It doesn't mean you got to pay at $385, and it doesn't mean you got to pay at $285. You could pay $300 if you wanted to, or $320, it really depends. So, the other thing is that it is competitive within the market. And it does provide you capacity for future COLAs and merit increases. As I pointed out earlier, there's scheduled increases for the police chief and the fire chief next year and the following year, and that changes the, basically, the top step. It also ensures that there's proper differentials between the city manager position and the highest-paid executive position. And one other thing I want to mention, just a second, is that you folks are embarking on finding and appointing an interim city manager. And this is, whatever pay range that you folks approve tonight, it is the same pay range that you will use to appoint your interim city manager. And if the city manager is a retired intuitant, CalPERS retired intuitant, that individual cannot receive any form of benefits, no stipend or anything like that. It'll just be the hourly wage. And so, just keep in mind that whatever pay scale that you end up adopting or approving, that is the pay scale that we will be using. And keep in mind that whatever you approve tonight, you may not have to amend that for years to come. And it would be at the city manager's direction, or council's direction, or depending on the market, if we need to come back. But this is something, I think, from the HR perspective, that you have, again, for two, three years, or even five years, depending on where you put the newly-appointed city manager. So, other considerations. So, we're at the county of San Mateo. We will be posting a city manager very soon. You may know that two cities near us, to the north of us, actually, to the south of us, the city of San Mateo, the city manager there has recently announced his retirement coming in June of 2023. He is currently making $283,863 per year. And as I understand it, I believe the police chief is now making a little bit more than the city manager, which means that pay scale probably will be looked at very soon. And another city to the north of us, the city of South San Francisco, our neighbor, the, that position is currently vacant. The city manager went south to take on a position, and when he left, he was making $307,590. And interestingly, the interim city manager is making more at $336,689. And just for additional information, the interim city manager happens to be a department head that's on an acting, excuse me, interim assignment as city manager. And she's been there for 30 years, but that is the amount that they're paying their interim city manager, who's fully benefited as an interim city manager. Okay, so that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Again, we'll go with the same. If there's any questions on the presentation from colleagues at this time, open it up to the public, then come back for any dialogue and possible action. So, any questions on the presentation? Seeing and hearing none, are there any members of the public?
No, there are no virtual hands raised, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for comments, thoughts, and/or direction.
Through the chair.
Councilmember Salazar.
Just, just one sort of broad comment for public consumption. And just, I just wanted to emphasize that none of what we're talking about tonight affects our current city manager. There is always concern about, you know, how we allocate costs and everything, and where we're spending our money, but... And having said that, in looking at these ranges, I do appreciate all of the research that was done and the comparisons. And I don't, I wasn't, we've looked at ranges before as part of our overall process. And during the last round of labor negotiations, we kicked that idea around, and it didn't get any traction. But I do think there is value in having that. Not necessarily for why the state is mandating it, because to me, it's confusing why they would say that a range is somehow better. I guess it's better than not stating any salary. But it seems that if you want to be fair and make sure that anybody who qualifies is getting paid regardless of the color of their skin or their gender, that you would want to be probably more specific than not. But regardless, I think that there is value in having an approved range. My only concern is that I feel that the bottom range is a little high. And I say that because when, when we hired our present city manager, we, we had some flexibility in bringing in somebody who was relatively new in the role, had good experience, but was not a seasoned city manager. And it was a person that had great pedigree and was willing to come here and, and work with us. It ended up being a great bargain for the city, because we didn't pay top dollar, and we got an amazing executive to come work for us, set us up for success currently. And, you know, and during his tenure, only received modest increases over that time. So, the compaction issue is, of course, a concern. And so, I want to make sure that we have headroom in there. But my real concern would be on that, on that bottom end, because there may be another opportunity to bring somebody in who may not be as experienced, but has a great deal of promise, that would be willing to come here and own their craft. And so, you know, I would want to have an opportunity to bring somebody in at that level. Of course, with an eye on the compaction issue. But of course, you know, we're looking at a series of steps over, over the next several years where this person could also move within that range. But I think having that flexibility on the bottom end would be important to me. Thank you.
And one thing I should have said, too, the reason this is being talked about, obviously because of the law. But it's also, this is not a topic that is permissible to be discussed amongst ourselves or in closed session of any sort. And all discussion, deliberation, dialogue, and action has to be done here in the public forum. So, it's not to make anyone uncomfortable. We're trying to put something on the spot. It is the requirement and the law that is written, and so, we are obeying that, and this is what the process is. So, I'd forgotten to say that. Vice Mayor Hamilton.
So, this is a, a comment, and then a question for Councilmember Salazar. The, I had the exact same concern and the exact same question, and then it was the compaction issue that kind of answered it for me. So, what would you propose for a lower range, based on everything? Because if we look at the, if we look at the, the, the compaction issue, and even look at the, you know, the current year of the, if we try to maintain even the current, the current, what do you call it, the current differential, just in, just, only for 2023, and we would, and then we would, it would immediately not work into 2024, it would only be lowering that number by $2,000. So, I'm just, I, I understand your comments and appreciate them, but I just don't know what the, what you, where you would want it lowered to. No, and, and I'm done, and I, I'll, yeah, please, please go ahead.
Any other council member, Medina?
The last name's Medina, you're right. Just teasing. Yeah, looking, looking at that number from being here earlier, and I think Councilman Salazar summed it up. It's on the high end, but now you have to look at the compaction issues. And there's not much room by going lower than that, that you're actually going to be able to comply with the compaction. Now, there's no legal, my understanding that there is no legal requirement on the compaction side. San Bruno doesn't have an official policy on the compaction side. So, here we are, trying to figure out what number that's going to be to, to attract somebody to come work here. And at any time, I generally think it's, at least a year after the contract, the city manager could ask for a raise, and we've done that. So, it's not like that number is stuck, right? So, we talked about the lower number, and we haven't yet talked about the higher number, which is very high at first glance. But for the, for the first year, if you're looking down the road, it, that gap starts shrinking. But as of right now, that number is, if not the highest, in looking at the range here. That doesn't mean that we have to pay anybody at that rate. It's just, that's the top limit. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that it's just a range.
Yeah, the proposed pay scale is at $385. And as I mentioned earlier, and I'll mention it again, the city of Daly City, who just recently appointed their city manager internally, who did not have city manager experience. It was an internal promotion, that person. They started him off at $376,870. So, this is not a seasoned city manager. The lowest paid in the 11 cities is the city of San Bruno, uses historic average, comes out to $299,186. So, the step of the highest-paid executive for the city of San Bruno, it's a kind of equation that I used. But obviously, it's the council's pleasure to modify that amount. Also, I wanted to mention to you that some of the other cities that are, and then Hillsborough, $273,182, and then Milbrae. Milbrae and Hillsborough are smaller cities than we are, and the city of Milbrae is at $275,141. And as I mentioned, while the city of San Mateo, my colleague, my counterpart in the city of San Mateo, I saw her the other day, and they're still working on proposing a pay scale. Not sure how that's going to look. Is at $336,000. I would think that that's going to be definitely within the range.
And I'm sorry, Councilmember Medina, did you, when we were talking about within the year, when we're negotiating, it may be that you say you start at X, but yet there's a COLA, or there's an increase that goes in the first six months, or... And again, always staff, feel free to correct me if I'm incorrect. Any other questions or comments in regards? We do have a scale. And I just want to check with the city attorney that is correct, right? The rates can be modified, being given at this point, whatever it may be, whether it's to accept this, or up and lower, or what have you.
That is correct.
And once these are set, just for clarity, I think you had said it, but just, this is good for the interim, an interim person, and for the permanent person. So, this range will hold true for that range for both positions.
That is correct. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to sort of give some additional information. The $285,410 comes out to $137.21 per hour, and the $385 comes out to $185.091 per hour. So, plus benefits, if it's your full-time person, for the interim city manager, that would be the rate, again, with no benefits.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Medina?
I'm sorry, thank you. City Attorney?
You raised an issue that highlighted a change that I would recommend in the resolution. And that is that whatever pay scale that you do settle on, the resolution provides that it's effective June 1, 2023. But I think that the resolution should instead provide for the pay scale to become effective on March 1, 2023.
Thank you. Thank you both. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need clarification within the salary range from $285. Oh, I lost my battery, sorry.
That's okay. So, the proposed pay range?
Does that mean that we have, when we negotiate, we have to start from that range, from that amount?
When you find a new city manager, correct. So, the minimum would be to the $285,410 annually, to $385 annually.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Salazar.
So, as, as the Vice Mayor pointed out, you know, we're, we're already pushing up against some limits on the compaction. But if I were to make a recommendation, I would say that if we were to go with the median for the comparable cities of $275,141, it would put us right around the 7% compaction number, which is what we heard in previous discussions, typical in San Bruno, although not the, the industry average, perhaps, but still within, with our, our norm. And so, that would be my recommendation.
Just to, just to clarify, so $275,141 would be the low, and are you still suggesting that the $385, to maintain that?
Unless someone has a...
Thoughts to Councilmember Salazar's thought?
I'm sorry. My mic, my mic wasn't on. I'm just trying to figure out what the, at that number, what the, if we were to hire somebody at that number, yeah, we would be, I think it's, it might even be under 2% compaction, right in January, this coming January of 2024.
But then that's assuming that, that's assuming that whoever, whoever we hire agrees to the lowest end of the scale, and it doesn't negotiate any increases over that period. So, there's variability, it gives, we still have variability to bring them up to where they need to be. But it just gives us that flexibility and...
For the, for the remainder of... So, that's your, that's your, your focus here, your goal here, is to give us more flexibility for the remainder of 2023 as we get started?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, so where we're at is a suggestion by Councilmember of $275,141, at the one, the low, as it's stated on the diagram. And the high is at $385, and I haven't heard anybody say no to that thus far, unless I'm...
Yeah, I mean, that, through the chair.
Please.
My, you know, obviously, that's, that's a high number. We're not, you know, the, for me to agree to that number for our next city manager, he's going to probably need to have some kind of omnipotent power. There's no way that we're going to bring somebody in, but it gives us that flexibility at the other end without having to come back and visit this. So, I, I'm fine with leaving that number where it is.
Mr. Salazar.
And one additional comment is that this range will be enduring over several years. And so, this also accounts for cost of living increases, whatever would happen over a number of years before we have to come back and go through this process again.
And, and that is, council members correct. So if you were to put it very tight, and we get to that, and we want to go above that, we have to go through this process. So, accurate? Yes, okay. So is there any action by council on the salary? It's a resolution. Mr. Sal, Councilmember Salazar?
Through the chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with my correction on the lower end of the spectrum to reflect the median salary of 275, 141. Effective March 1st. Effective tomorrow.
A second.
A motion and second have made. I want to clarify with the city attorney that the motion is.
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear, was that motion including the change of the effective date?
The low, oh, the March 1st. It was to include March 1st, which I'm going to comment that's tomorrow. So. So does everybody understand the motion? That is 275,141 on the low, 385 on the high. And that is to take effect March 1st, 2023. There's been a motion and a second. Wait, did I, I have a motion from Salazar.
And second.
And a second from Alvarez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Hearing none, I have a 5-0 unanimous vote on that topic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to go, but before we go into item D, hold on, gentlemen, before we go into item D, we're going to take a five-minute break to stretch. Thank you. Okay. Is everybody ready? All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene the San Bruno City Council from its recess, and we are on conduct of business. Item four, please.
Item 8D, conduct study session for the final, excuse me, for the draft final local roadway safety plan.
Director Lee?
Good evening, Mayor Medina, members of council. My name is Matt Lee. I'm here to discuss, I'm here to talk about the study session for the local roadway safety plan. But before we get started, I wanted to frame the document because this is the first time this is coming to council. The LRSP, as we call it, is a long-range planning document that was recently required in order for us to receive state and federal funding. It's meant to be a living document that's updated approximately every five years at a minimum. And the way I would equate it is be something similar to a general plan in the sense that you use it as a guidance, guiding document as you look at local road safety. The, the plan does not provide a location-specific recommendations like it did, like the Safe Routes to School Plan did, that we brought to you earlier this year. But this document is to utilize data to identify locations and then provide countermeasures that could be used for specific situations. Its goal is to help guide the city as it develops its solutions at those specific locations, whether it be engineering, education, or enforcement-related. But, so I won't be the one actually doing the presentation today. Really excited to introduce Harry Yip, who's our new city traffic engineer. He filled a vacancy that was two and a half years in the making. And I'm really excited to have him on board. I want him to take just a few seconds before he gets into the presentation to give you a little bit of background about himself before he jumps in. So go ahead, Harry.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Harry Yip, and I am the senior civil engineer and working, also the city traffic engineer. Before this, I was at the County San Mateo, the Public Works Road Operations. And before that, I was also at VTA for 10 years. Even prior to that, I did my civil engineering masters and bachelors in UC Berkeley. And also, I'm also a San Bruno resident myself, just like all of you.
Well, that just shows you're good people. Thank you for coming back home.
Okay, with that, I guess I'll launch into this study session. All right, so as Matt mentioned, today, we're going to talk about the local roads' safety plan. And this is just a study session. So we're going to first talk about what our objective is, give a little background of all the things that led up to this. Then we'll get into the actual study session, following with fiscal impact, next steps, tonight's recommended action, and questions. So the objective, the objective is to conduct a study session and provide comments on the draft local road safety plan. And some background for this. A local road safety plan, as Matt kind of mentioned, is a data-driven plan to prioritize safety improvements on local roadways over the long term. And also, beginning in 2022, LRSP is what we call, short for Local Road Safety Plan, is required to be eligible for regional, state, and federal traffic safety grants. In February 2020, the city was awarded $72,000 of grant funding from Caltrans to develop an LRSP. And the grant has a three-year deadline for completion. In February of 2021, the city issued a request for proposals for professional consulting services to develop an LRSP. In July of 2021, city council authorized the city manager to contract with TJKM Transportation Consultants for the development of the LRSP. And then in February of 2023, the draft final LRSP was also addressed, presented to the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee. So now we'll go into the study session of the plan. This is a agenda for the study session. We're going to talk about what specifically is a local roadway safety plan, the development process of it, and some example-recommended projects that were came, coming out of the plan, and some of the existing efforts that, you know, the city has already been working on. So first of all, what is a local road safety plan? Well, the purpose of it is to, you know, use data to plan and prioritize safety improvements on local roads. Like Matt said, it's a living document with five-year updates, kind of like a general plan. And it applies to all public roads in the city except for highways 35, 101, 280, and 380. And that's mainly because these are, you know, roads that don't have anything fronting them, so they're not really considered local roads in this, in the, in the sense of this plan. The plan also follows state and federal engineering methods and principles. And it recommends state and federally-proven countermeasures. And also, recommendations are made, kind of as Matt said, at a planning level and require further engineering to be more site-specific. So this is kind of the overall process of the plan. We develop the plan goals, analyze collision data, and then meet with our stakeholders and safety partners to go over the, the data and the plan goals. And then we determine, using the data and the information we get from our stakeholders, we determine our emphasis areas, and then identify crash reduction strategies. So what are the goals of this LRSP? Well, the first is to identify and analyze traffic safety-related issues, enhance safety for all users of the roadway, coordinate with key stakeholders, reduce fatal and severe injury collisions, and create a prioritized list of potential projects, and ensure improvements are made equitably based on high-risk locations as identified by collision data. So in terms of collision data, we use about five years of collision data. The study, so that was from 2015 to 2019. The study began in 2021. The, but the availability of statewide collision data is typically one year behind the current year. And then, you know, we didn't study 2020 because, you know, it was kind of a weird year because of COVID-19. And this is just to give you an overall sense of the collision data. There are three lines shown on the graph. I don't, you probably can't see the, the legends on the bottom, but the top yellow line represents the total collisions for each year from 2015 to 2019. The second gray line is a subset of that yellow line. It's only, it's meant to be only the property damage collisions. And then the red line down below is the one that represents fatal and severe injury collisions. And that one is kind, it does jump out to me that, you know, 2015 and 2016 looks very low, and all of a sudden, it jumps out to 18 and 17 for 2017 to 2019. But I took a deeper look into the, like, the 10-year range, and 2015 and 2016 were really abnormally low. Generally, the years were, before that, were around 10. And then, so we found 2017 and 2018 was kind of high, too. But 2019 is a little bit more on par with the data before 2015. And this is the, kind of the breakdown of the collision severity of all the collisions. We see that, you know, 75% of it is property damage only. 11% is just a complaint of pain, 11% of visible injury, 3% of it is severe injury, and 0.2% are fatal. So we mapped out all these collisions on a map. What you see here, there's, you know, a lot of dots. The ones that are the, you know, the little donut-shaped red ones kind of are representing the fatal collisions. The deeper, darker red are severe injury. And then there's an orange for visible injury, and there's a yellow for a complaint of pain injury collision. So yeah, the key takeaways, we had three fatal collisions. Those were at Cherry and San Bruno, Commodore and El Camino, and the San Felipe and El Camino Real. And then what also kind of jumps out is, you know, the El Camino Real, San Bruno Avenue, and Sneeze Lane are kind of the corridors with the, you know, most collisions on this map. So with the data, we had a stakeholder working group meeting with our stakeholders, and that included two members of our Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, two members of our Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisor Committee, representatives from the San Bruno Park School District, and also our police and fire. District, and also our police and fire representatives. And with them, we reviewed our goals, the plan development, and the collision data. And we also asked them for their help in soliciting comments from the public, because our next step was to, you know, solicit comments from our public. And, you know, we did a blast posting, we had a website that was going to, you know, interactively let our citizens, you know, place a dot on, on the map and kind of, you know, write in what their concerns are for certain locations. And that map was all, you know, posted on Facebook, Twitter, our city website, Nextdoor, Instagram, to try to encourage our citizens to get involved with, you know, what their experiences are with the traffic safety in the city. So overall, we got about 125 comments. You know, the thing that jumps out is the first two bars on the left, those represent El Camino Real and San Bruno. So this graph, you know, tabulates all, you know, the comments according to certain streets, and, you know, El Camino Real and San Bruno Ave are, you know, what's on the foremost of the citizens' minds. You know, after that, there's also Cherry Avenue, Crystal Springs Road, Crestmore, Rollingwood, Huntington, Madison Member Lane, College Drive, San Mateo Avenue, and Skyline Boulevard. So we kind of took a, you know, this is a deeper look into the two, you know, big concerns of the public, El Camino Real and San Bruno Ave, and, you know, we categorized some of what their concerns were, and, you know, the top two are for both, the tougher both is pedestrian right-of-way. Our citizens are concerned with, you know, navigating through these roadways as a pedestrian. Next is like automobile right-of-way, and that's, what that means is, you know, how, who has the, you know, right to travel down the road, you know, to negotiate traffic? So after looking at that, you know, looking through all the collision data, we, you know, looked at collision types, collision severity, modes of travel, weather, time of day, and the primary collision factor as, and location, to try to better understand, you know, what our focus areas should be. And, you know, looking at this dataset, this will also kind of be our baseline for, you know, future evaluations of any improvements we make. So if, say, we want to, you know, address one of these things, we want to analyze five years from now how it may have improved, or, you know, what could have been done, this kind of will be our baseline dataset. And through that dataset, we, you know, identified these eight emphasis areas, improving intersection safety, reducing unsafe speed, improved bicycle and pedestrian safety, reducing nighttime collisions, reducing rear-end collisions, reducing broadside collisions, and reducing improper driving, and reducing collisions near schools. So we also developed this map of priority areas, and this map kind of shows our, you know, top 10 intersections, the top 10 corridors that, you know, based on severity of collisions and density of collisions, what our top, you know, 10 and 15, 10 intersections and 11 corridors are. So the little blue lines you see on the map represent the corridors, the top 11 corridors that need the most attention, and the numbers with the circles represent the intersections that need the most attention. And, you know, we can see that this kind of aligns with our citizens' comments are, you know, El Camino is this, this one long line throughout the whole city, and then San Bruno Avenue is also one of those blue lines, at least the eastern portion of it. Other segments include Sneeath Lane, Sharp Park Road on the top left, Crestwood right next to 280, Crystal Springs Road near the park, Huntington Avenue near the Cupid's Arrow, Cupid's Row. Also, San Mateo Avenue and Cherry also are on this. So this was also, you know, based on a scoring system that is used by the state in analyzing grant applications. So it follows the same systems, you know, so when we apply for grants, it would, you know, could help us with that work. And generally, it just gives more weight to fatal and severe collisions, and that's kind of why you don't see Cherry and San Bruno on here, even though we have that one fatal collision, the, it didn't have enough other collisions around it to, to bring it up to that top 10 level. So we have this data, and we have this priority list. What do we do with it? Well, we try to recommend countermeasures to address some of those issues. The plan follows the four Es of traffic safety. That's engineering, education, enforcement, emergency, emergency response. And for engineering, we use the countermeasures that are, you know, state and federally proven, and that comes from the Caltrans Local Road Safety Manual. So here are some of those countermeasures. Improved signal hardware. I know the city's been pretty good at, you know, replacing its signal heads, and I think most everyone of them have that yellow border around them already. There's also improving signal timing to make sure traffic flows in a reasonable and safe manner. Upgrading signal mast arms, providing an advanced stop bar at intersections where, you know, cars stop a little bit short of a crosswalk to provide extra buffer zones for pedestrians. There's a raised median refuge, you know, so some of the longer roads, you want to give pedestrians a, you know, a safe refuge place in case they can't make it across in one cycle. There's also advanced walk for pedestrians. That's where pedestrians get a little head start before vehicular traffic goes. Installing delineators, reflectors, you know, that, you know, part of that is making the roadway feel narrower, but encouraging drivers to drive a little bit slower. There's the, this has been, you know, the RFP has been used a lot by many cities up and down the peninsula. This is the, those yellow flashing lights that you see to, you know, warn drivers that, hey, there's a pedestrian who is wanting to get across, please be aware. Another crosswalk with safety features, that's, that could incorporate any of those pedestrian ones I mentioned before, like the RFP, pedestrian refuge median. We've been installing some bow bouts, too, where that reduces some crossing distances for pedestrians. And then I think this, the one on the right is upgrading intersection markings. So some of the maybe more complicated intersections, you will want to put some guiding lines through the intersection to guide drivers to the correct turns or through movement. So, you know, engineering can't do it all alone. That's why they have the four Es, and one of the Es is education. And, you know, it's good to conduct public information and education campaigns, provide service announcements, and provide, and we also are working, you know, we're going to be working closely with the Safe Routes to School program and the plan that was recently adopted by City Council. Enforcement, you know, the plan recommends, you know, increased enforcement as much as we can, increased penalties for repeat offenders, and maybe have a zero tolerance and distracted driving, zero tolerance for distracted driving, DUIs, signal and stop sign violations. Emergency response, we always want to make sure our, whatever, you know, engineering countermeasures we add don't hinder emergency responders, and, you know, City has been working on providing signal preemption for emergency vehicles. So now I'm going to talk about one of those example projects that is mentioned in the plan, and this one is for Crystal Springs Road, and it stretches from El Camino Real up to Oak Avenue right near the city park. And the emphasis, it's about a half-mile stretch of road, and emphasis area is to look at, you know, unsafe speeding and improving pedestrian and bicycle safety. And, you know, the plan suggested these countermeasures, which were installing those delineators, which is those reflective posts, and RFBs, and enhanced crosswalks that could include bow bouts, pedestrian, you know, high-visibility crosswalks, or those RFBs. And the ballpark cost of that is going to be about 1.4 million, including ongoing maintenance. And this one is about over a million, because they would have a lot of curb improvements that would require concrete work. Another example project is San Bruno and Third Avenue. This is like the first signal that you'll see coming off of 101 in the city. It is signalized, so we would, you know, the emphasis area is looking at reducing broadside collisions and improving, improving pedestrian bicycle safety. And some of the countermeasures they've suggested are to convert a signal from a single pedestal to a mast arm type, just so you would see, better be able to see the signal heads, and also include those advanced stop bars and advanced walk time for pedestrians. And the ballpark cost of this would be about $400,000 plus ongoing maintenance. Also like to highlight some of the existing efforts that the city has already been doing. We have our walk and bike plan, and from that, we have currently a, you know, a design project for a citywide bicycle route installation. We have already completed the Huntington-San and Selmo bicycle improvements, the transit corridor plan, had identified pit improvements on San Bruno Ave, and that has been, you know, working its way through construction on phases. I believe we're on phase four now at, it was Green Avenue. And then Huntington Psycho Tract, and also, we also completed an additional crosswalk at El Camino Real and Angus Ami Route outside of City Hall. Other existing efforts, City has a citywide signage replacement program, and also, we have a Cherry and San Bruno Avenue Signal Improvement Project that is under construction. So next steps, so after receiving the input from City Council, staff plans have finalized the LRSP and then present it back to adoption for on March 14th. And because it was on a three-year deadline, we're kind of already at the deadline, but I spoke with Caltrans, and they're okay if the city adopts it by March 14th. Then after that, we'll, we'll start looking at implementation, how that works with our CIP program and our, you know, grant opportunities, and how, you know, it falls into development projects. And then further down the future, you know, we would have to evaluate and update the plan, as grants require this document to be updated at minimum every five years. Fiscal impact, there is no fiscal impact with receiving this study session. The plan itself was budgeted in the fiscal year 2021 and 2022 CIP budget, and it's mostly funded with that $72,000 Caltrans grant with a $32,000 match from Measure A. So tonight's action, so, tonight's action was to conduct a study session and provide comments on the draft local roadway safety plan. Yep, that's all I have.
Thank you very much for the information and your presentation. Colleagues, when it comes to us, I'd like if we, one person go the one time through and get everything up for our, for our staff, but just because of the hour, I want to see if there's any members of the public first that want to speak on this in case. Are there any members of the public?
There are no virtual hands raised, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you, just because of the hour. All right, with that, colleagues, any, please, at this point, questions, comments, put it all together, and please feel free. Councilor Medina.
Yes, first, thank you for coming here. I know we've been waiting for our traffic engineer for a while, so I definitely wanted to thank you, and it's great that you live in San Bruno. It's a wonderful place to live, as you know. This is the first of many discussions we're going to have about the different projects identified in the plan. So I don't really have too many questions on it, because we're going to, we're going to see these projects as they come forward. And, and the timeline for the first one, is there a, is there a budget that you're thinking about, a number that you're thinking about for our upcoming budget? I guess that would probably be my first question.
Through the mayor. So after the adoption of this plan, it's really timely because we're going into the budgeting process. And so what we're intending on doing is looking at both the Safe Routes to School Plan and the LRSP to see if we can identify locations that we might want to put as part of that process. The LRSP in itself is something that we're also utilizing opportunistically as grant opportunities come up to apply for those as well, so we can leverage our local funds to be able to obtain existing and new grant, and new funding measures. And so that's, that's what we're looking at. In terms of specific locations, we don't have any yet. I would venture to guess that it would be some of the locations that are probably on the higher, on our priority list through the LRSP.
Great. The other question, would these projects first be identified and shared with, with the TSPC? Is that kind of like the guiding commission? That would be, who would be taking the lead of?
City manager?
Sure. These projects would be handled like a number of our city traffic projects that come from staff through the capital budgeting process to the council. TSPC typically handles more resident-based requests and other items like that.
Great, but each of these projects would be shared with the TSPC?
City Manager Grogan so eloquently stated that the, these are, these, the, there are different types of projects that go through TSPC. There is an intersection where some of these projects may go through TSPC, and there are other ones where they may not, and it will just be on a case-by-case basis.
Excellent, thank you. Those are my questions.
Yeah, thanks, and I think when I just, for clarity, so what I always don't, what I get concerned about is, so are they going to be reviewed with the TSPC? Well, that would give the expectation that they're having input to make recommendations and or modifications, which that's not what I'm hearing, unless it is within their purview, correct? Okay. Just wanted to be just clear. Okay. Any other questions or comments from colleagues at this time? Vice Mayor.
I'll make just a quick comment. Actually, my questions have been answered. My, my first one was, because I noticed that the, that the February 2023 deadline was two hours away, so thank you for clarifying that we, that we have a little bit of an extension. The, and then my other questions had to do with the, with. The, and then my other questions had to do with the, with the prioritization of the projects and how do you figure out which one, but you've, you've covered that already, so I appreciate it. But I just, I, but I did want to make just, just a general comment. You know, I was on the TSPC for 12, for 12 years, dealing with all these types of things. And, and I read through the, I read through the, the, the draft report. And this is just great, this is great. This is really something that's really going to help the, the city, help the process, and help kind of coalesce all the, all the various, you know, feedback that we get from residents that, that, you know, things are generally unsafe, being able to focus these into, into, into action. So I'm super supportive of this, thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions or any real constructive criticism on what you've done. I think it is a great report, a lot of data in there, and I think the data is critical. You know, we, we need to know with, in very real terms what the issues are and, and really quantify them so that we know what solutions that we can, we can look at. So I definitely appreciate the work that went into this and appreciate, actually, looking forward to, you know, implementing some of these programs going forward, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have an ongoing projects that basically address the 2015-2019 study that we conducted? Like the San Bruno Avenue, Sneed Lane, and El Camino Real? So we did a study on, on, on those streets. What actions did the staff made to address those studies?
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman Alvarez. So the study really began based on a snapshot of the existing conditions when the study began. And it was a study that was funded in the 2001, 2002 budget year. So everything that has been identified as a need in the study is new that we need to begin to plan projects for. It is also true that we have a number of traffic improvement projects that are ongoing and that are planned in, in various stages. Some of those, or, or all of those are in our pipeline and will continue. But everything that's identified in the study is really looking prospectively. And if I can just bounce back for one quick second to Councilmember Medina's question of, in the upcoming budgeting process, which of these projects may be first up? There may very well be projects that staff recommends for budgeting. However, one of our first priorities are the high priority improvements from the Safe Routes to Schools Plan that you just adopted. And those were approximately $500,000, half a million dollars worth of high priority projects in the Safe Routes to Schools. So we have worked with staff to make sure that as we prioritize our, our projects, we're really hitting those first and then underpinning everything else after that.
Okay, and for myself, some has already been said, of course, but having the data and having that information may not make everyone say, yeah, but it's not completely right because I know where I live and da, da, da. But, but it does give us a factual base in which to begin and to have that conversation and try to address some of these concerns. So thank you both very much, appreciate it and welcome. With that, we will move on to council committee report outs. Any folks have any committee report outs? Okay, I will go to mine. Just so you know, Councilmember Salazar and I had a RAC advisory, which is for Recreation Aquatics Construction Advisory Meeting. It was the same presentation we received, but the one caveat to that was that there was a question of concern about the bike path through City Park and how was that going to be worked into that as far as getting through the park. February 16th, I attended our commute.org. Nothing that was notable to bring back. February 16th, I also had a tour of the MRI, MRI, M, God, AMR headquarters. That's located on Rollins and Burlingame. That's the ambulance company that helps and facilitates for our 18 jurisdictions within the county of San Mateo that I've been appointed the, or elected to the chair of that for that joint power authority. I will tell you, it was a very interesting process to see actually how it's staffed, it's funnelled, it's communicated, and some of those criterias. I still tell the council and staff that we're going to have a question that comes up in regards to dispatching and the cost factor that the county deals with, with the JPA. So that could affect us economically. February 24th, attended the council selection committee that was hosted by Hillsborough along with a couple of other colleagues, Councilmember Medina and Alvarez. And it was a honored Jackie Speer, and she introduced her new endeavor and new foundation that is this Thursday. She is now beginning the process who is to battle child poverty in San Mateo County. So she's made it very clear that she's come home, but she's got a lot ahead and she's going to be taking a very big task. And that is it for me on that. I see nothing listed, so I don't believe I need to ask for any public input. So we'll move on to item number 10, comments from council members. First topic is by myself. Thank you to the Samit Foundation, a family foundation for the receipt of recent $10,000 donation to the San Bruno Public Library. The generous donation will be used to expand the library's Wi-Fi hotspot lending program as well as enhance its ebook collection. This donation will directly improve the quality of life for many San Bruno residents. A letter has been sent by my, with my signature, but that's, staff did the work and drafted it and did a great job. But it's also, I wanted this noted too, because it's appreciated and they do give a lot to the community. But it's also, this has been ongoing, didn't just start this time. It's been ongoing for, I can tell you probably over $150,000 that they've given to the library for one means or another over a period of time. And so I want to thank the foundation for their continued support, even though as they transition to a new person overseeing the facility. As far as my council comments, just to say that on February 16th, we had, and I say we because we were all there, had a Java with Josh where 45 people attended for the state senator. We answered some questions. I am working on coffees in San Bruno with Supervisor Pine, Canapa, and Assembly Member Pappen. February 17th, had a meeting with Supervisor Canapa in Daly City. February 17th, attended the beautiful field at Cappuccino where it was the alumni versus the cap varsity game of their ceremonial game to the new field, and it is impressive. February 18th, attended the caffeine with Canapa in Westboro, which focused on mental health. Where school board trustees Jennifer Blanco and Terry Chavis and former trustee John Marino attended. February 20th, had a conversation with Linda Patterson, who is on our adopted unit for the 101st Airborne. For those of you may know, some years ago, we adopted a unit in the airborne. And so we had a conversation that, she's out of the area now, but is very engaged and involved. She's been doing it over 50 years. And that unit will be being deployed next month. And she will give us updates when it occurs and was asking for assistance and maybe getting letters from young, young people, students, and care packages. February 23rd, attended a teacher's cash-for-class event where the San Bruno Park School District teachers were invited to attend the fifth annual Rotary event where each teacher enjoyed food, refreshments, a raffle, cash prize made possible by generous San Bruno business communities and Rotarians so they could assist their classroom. And around 80 teachers attended. And I can say we were all there, and even with the weather, we all made it. On February 26th, I and your entire city council attended a ribbon cutting at 1550 Motel at 550 El Camino Real. And the owner had said that he's going to pay his staff 16 hour, up to 16 hours outside of the workplace to volunteer back to the city of San Bruno in some capacity. Doesn't have to be to the city, but in the city. And that was something that the owner announced at that event. And I can tell you to get it on your calendar, council, if you could. On April 29th, which is a Saturday, will be the next community drop-off day that will be held at the same location on Sneed Lane at the same time, which is 8 to 11, more to come. And that is mine, anyone else? All right, with that, we hit the 10:30, very good. Staff, thank you. Colleagues, thank you. Everyone, appreciate it. With that, we will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on March 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM, meeting adjourned.